Okay, everyone. So, we're back. We're on item number 40. And that's the consideration of a study session on the Capital Improvements Program, or the CIP. And we do have a staff presentation. This is from Susan Michael, the Capital Improvements Program Manager. Welcome, Susan. And so if you'd like at this point, please take away the presentation.
And if you will, Mayor, I'll start us off with a quick presentation.
Oh, yes, of course. I apologize. I was just going back on my agenda indication. Director Morley of Public Works, please take it away.
Just a short presentation for you on my screen. You should be able to see that presentation. And just wanted to bring us back to where we were at the last meeting when we're talking about our CIP. There are several CIP projects that are multi-year, annual CIP projects. These are appropriated annually for things that are in progress. We would like the council to continue these. I think they've been great projects for us, so it makes sense to continue on with them. We do have a number of unfunded projects, CIP projects. These are projects that we've identified as being needs and programmed over the course of five years. I will note that project number five, the Dompernet Bridge LED lighting can come off the list. We were able to accommodate and complete that one in-house this year as one of our department's special projects. But otherwise, this shows that in addition to the 40 projects we already have in process, there are significant additional needs throughout the city. We do have seven projects that we're asking you to consider for the next fiscal year. These seven projects generally complement work that's already been done and move along priorities and efforts throughout the city. So within the CIP, these would be key for us moving forward. These are limited this year because, as I mentioned, we already have 40 in progress. So we wanted to make sure that we were managing to our capacity. And with that, that pretty much completes the report. I will say that we did provide a staff report with additional information from our last meeting. That additional information supports some of the conversation on topics that were discussed by the council of what your interests were, so that will bolster the conversation hopefully for the rest of the evening. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Thank you very much, Matt, and welcome. And did Susan have a presentation, I'm assuming, on the Capital Improvement Program as well?
From here, we'll respond to your questions in the conversation.
Okay. Sounds good. So, well, thank you very much. So let's go ahead and bring this to... You know, I wonder with that level whether we have members of the public with hands raised on the CIP. So let me try to see if we do have members of the public. So we're on item 40. This is Capital Improvement Program. And are there any members of the public that would like to speak on the CIP? And yes, we immediately have hands raised. One is from Jenny, and one is from Rhoda Frye. And so Jenny, per the usual practice, will have the three minutes per speaker. We'll go to our Zoom, hands raised, and then we'll go to blue cards. I'll note that there are no members of the public here tonight anymore, I should say. And then we'll go to any emails that come in to cityclerk@coopertino.org during the time that our first speaker is speaking, and again, that's Jenny. And then, again, with consolidation of time, I think that it may not be applicable here, but to remind everyone, if you wanted to consolidate time with other people, you'll be adding increments of two minutes for each person that you add, up to nine minutes total. Okay, so Jenny, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Hi. Yes, you guys are doing a great job. There's lots... It's like the multimedia show going on here. I'm glad to see the Stockelmeier House on there. You know, things move along at their own progress, and I'm just really glad that this little old house is still out there. And if you guys can just make it watertight, and then I'd like... I hope we can have a plan for it, you know, down the road. You know, things take time. But I think that we could have really, really great future with this house in terms of a historic site. I remember sitting in the audience years ago when there was the talks about rehabilitating the Orange Orchard. That was probably, what, about eight years ago? You all then put the trail in. You know, there were discussions about what... how wide it was going to be. I mean, I don't... What has that been, like, six, seven, eight years? And I think the final completion of this is the house. And it's just... It's sitting there, it's waiting. And to me, it's kind of like the ultimate completion of that entire piece of land. What do we do with the house? The house has been there the entire time that the orchard's been there. I think the orchard was planted in the '30s, and the trail now goes out, et cetera. But we can't ignore that piece of... that little house sitting there. It has to be finished and have its place in that parkland. And I predict a great future for it. And as long as we can keep it watertight and then just come up with a plan for it, you know, even if we're still doing this five to 10 years from now, that's fine. Old houses sit there quietly until someone does something with it. Anyway, thank you for poking along with the Stockelmeier House. It'll still be... I hope it'll still be there 100 years from now, but as a really great asset for Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. And let's do a quick check here. We have Rhoda, followed by Peggy. Madam City Clerk, I assume there are no blue cards because there are no people in the chambers.
That's correct.
And were there any emails that came in during this time while Jennifer was speaking?
No, Mayor.
Okay, great. So we have Rhoda Frye, followed by Peggy Griffin. And Rhoda, welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. You know, a long time ago, I was reading the general plan, and it talked about these SIPs needing to include cost of ownership. You know, when we look at a product, like, okay, I'm going to buy a printer, and do I buy... You know, how do I decide between two printers? If you get the printer that's cheaper, you might actually wind up spending more in ink, right? We know that. So part of the SIP needs to include the cost of ownership. And at some point, that seems to have disappeared from the general plan, and I think that we need to bring it back. Which brings me to the Blackberry Farm. This idea, this splash pad, has been there for a really long time. At one point, it was $70,000, and with $700,000, now it's $500,000. There was a slide. The slide was installed around 2012, and then there were improvements made to it. So I just, you know, with something that's only 10 years old, it just doesn't make sense. And at the end of the day, is the cost of a splash pad? This is a half a million dollars. I sent an email earlier about, you know, there was some talk about, well, the splash pad would be less expensive to operate. Would it be? It would eliminate a job of a job, right, for a student. And I think it's nice that the city provides jobs for our youth. And, you know, to make a pencil out, assuming there's no maintenance either way, you'd be looking at 41 years to pencil out. Splash pad at Blackberry Farm to replace the slide does not make sense. We really need to invest in our parks that are in really poor shape, like Memorial Park. Or like, let's build out the Midi Park. This just does not make sense. The other thing that seems to have disappeared off the SIP, because I've talked with Parks and Rec in the past, is that there was 30-some-odd trees that were planted in the parking lot at Blackberry Farm years ago. They've all died, and I think those need to be replaced. I think that would be a good thing. The other thing I was a little concerned about was I saw in one report that said the splash pad... If the splash pad doesn't get approved, then the slide goes away completely. I thought that looked at first that it was going to be a replacement, and then I was looking at Attachment B, and the splash pad wasn't there at all. So I thought that it had actually been removed. So I was very surprised to see it in this report. So how does it keep on coming back? And I just... Was discussed by y'all last time, that it didn't seem to make sense in that location, and I agree. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rhoda. And our next and final speaker on this item number 40 is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. I agree with Rhoda as far as what she said about the splash pad. Half a million dollars. And if... And the way I read it was, if you don't approve the splash pad, the slide is going away anyway. What does it take to refurbish it? You know, a job, a summer job now, is particularly for swimming, is pay... It pays well and gets kids out working, which they need to do. The library parking structure, I spoke before. Nobody wants it, as far as three stories with parking on the roof overlooking neighbors. The last time the City Hall was discussed, it was talked about putting the parking under City Hall. So I wonder about that. And the major recreational facilities, use and market analysis? What about first doing Memorial Park instead of looking for other alternatives to work on? Fix Memorial Park first? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peggy. We'll bring this back to council at this time. And so would anyone like to start us off with any questions of staff on the Capital Improvements Program? And I see a hand raised from Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask a clarification question. So I read this three times, and every time I read it, I get something new, but this, I have a question on the developing of the CIP. I understand council identified priority is on one of the priorities. And the other priorities... Do I... I don't need to share this. I can just read it.
Okay.
The other priorities...
Perhaps Councilmember Way, if you just, for the benefit of everyone else, just indicated what page you're on.
Okay. So it's page 1283. Do you want me to share? I can share it.
Oh, sure. Actually, that would probably be helpful.
That would be better? Okay. Let me do that. It's the first time I'm sharing it, so let's see if I know how to do it.
I'm sure you'll do fine.
Share screen. Yes. And did I find it? Which one is it? Search bar, right there. Now I can't see it. Can you see it?
I can't see it. Oh, no. There you go.
Actually, I can see it. Okay. So my question for staff is, when you develop your CIP, and if I look at the seven programs that you suggested, staff suggested, there are three actually are council priorities. There are four that have something to do with health and safety. And that's according to staff's expertise and analysis that they can... This is my question for the staff, that they are proposing this because there's a need for safe and health... Health and safety. And then there are other ones that conforming with our master plans. They are public inputs, such as parking for library. I'm positive that's public input, because we did have a traffic study done in 2020, I believe. So I do... And then external funding. That one I know, because I'm going to put a little input on that. As a school board member, we've done three major bond, and we've done almost more than 20 improvement projects. We have something ready to go, and then when the state or federal has facility fund available, we can apply right away. So we actually leverage a lot of state and federal funding, because we have project that's ready to go. Done the scoping, done the... So external funding is very important. I don't see anything right here. So my question for staff is, when you are developing this seven priorities, I understand our council believe that council priority is very, very important, which I think you probably take it into account. But the other three, how do you process this? Is it through department, through managers, or through Park and Recreation? So how is that process going?
Thanks for the question, Councilmember Way. And City Manager Troop, would you like to start off staff on that answer?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor and council, and Councilmember Way. So like you said, we are going to first look at what is the council priorities. Is there anything in there that we know may not be on the work plan, but we know it wants to be done? For instance, the Stockelmeier House, you know, looking and we've gone through and we've all walked through the homes, looked at them. So we know that's a priority, so we throw that on there. Other ones, you know, such as the splash pad was put on because the pool itself, it may look like it's in good condition, but it's out in the sun, the rain, the wind, the sun. It just 10 years of the elements wears that fiberglass down, so we have to, you know, either replace it, replace it, or try and somehow fix it. We also send... I forgot if they told me. The reports that have to go into Cal OSHA, they have to come out and inspect it. It's very onerous on what we do on that part. So if we go back and we say, okay, you want to continue it, we'd have to do a new slide, and it's very expensive, too. And yes, we still would have people working there. We just wouldn't have to have the two people on one site, because you have one at the top slide, one at the bottom slide. Someone could be over at the splash pool, another could be a lifeguard in the regular pool. So, you know, it would be good in that direction. So we have to look at that as the public health and safety, and I forgot that list up there now. But we'll get with the different department heads and discuss with them what are other needs? Is there going around doing their jobs and work? What are things that have popped up that we know something has to be, you know, done and considered? Maybe a report came in, study came in, something, you know, we finalized somewhere else, and now we put that on there. The other one is, I'll reach out, too. I'm going to ask either Matt or Susan to jump in, and if they have any additional input.
Great. Thank you very much, City Manager Troop. And I'll just mention master plans and external funding, or the other two columns there.
Correct. So when we... That's right. So when we do finish a master plan, or we know one's coming up, we've been talking about the Memorial Park, so we want to make sure we move on forward with that one. That is Matt's.
I think City Manager Troop has done a great job in explaining the process.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Matt. And Susan, anything to add to that?
No, I can happily... Sorry. I can go into any detail that is requested, but I do believe that City Manager Troop handled the process part of it well.
No, I think Jim's description is very appropriate. So it's good to see that set forth. It's excellent. So Councilmember Way, anything else at this point before we move it to another councilman?
Just one more quick question.
Okay, sure. Let's go ahead.
So with our first study session and following with this one, this is actually for the council to put input and get scoping. And because I did hear the input from public, that there is no public input. So when do we get public input? Say if council say we want to do the splash pad, or we want to do the Jolloman All-Inclusive Playground, the bathroom facility, do we have a time that we accept public input?
Well, that's fair, Councilmember Way. So this has been noticed, right? And so we did have a couple of members of the community talk about a particular project. But perhaps we want to take that back to our city manager, Public Works Director, Capital Improvements Program Manager. Anyone have input on that question? When does the public input process take place here?
Just from my... Going off my prior experience, and Matt can chime in, too, is just when we do these different sessions on... Because we'll put them out there before, like, this is not the first time we've talked about it. So people have that ability to review it and look at it, and then, well, not here, but come forth on Zoom or something to make any comments or suggestions. They also have all five councilmembers that they can send in their comments and thoughts and whatnot on the projects.
We do public outreach and engagement early and often on our projects. We do it through our master planning process, through our community meetings, through our pop-up outreach events. So it's a continuous process that where we're capturing that public input. So although this is the sort of the culmination of that, where the public can come and provide direct input to the council, we are hearing them throughout the entire process, whether it be at a commission meeting, when we're out in the public, when we're out of sight, when our partners are providing input, that they hear from their customers, like Parks and Rec who operate the facilities on a regular basis. So the input is significant for these projects.
Okay, thanks, Matt. And Councilmember Way, you were indicating you had a quick follow-up before I moved to the council.
So when... So today is just approval or adjust, but when a project is specifically being implemented, the public still have a lot of time to put input, and the council also have time to put input.
These projects will evolve very much. So today is just the sort of the next step in the process. This will bring the projects into ultimately a CIP, and we'll develop that CIP program, and we'll continue the outreach in an ongoing way throughout the course of the project. And Susan may have additional input on this item.
Great.
Thank you. Just one quick point is that... Thank you, Mayor. Is that we do also rely on our relationships and our reports to the commissions. We do regularly visit, especially Bike and Ped and Parks and Rec, because that's where a lot of our projects reside. So we are in, I believe, good communication with the commissions and rely on community input at that point as well.
Great. Thanks very much. And so let's go on to Councilmember Moore.
Okay.
And then Vice Mayor Chaua for Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. So we do have input on these projects from the Planning Commission and what they thought of them, because I didn't see it in the packet, so I was wondering if that's one of the attachments?
Okay. A question from Councilmember Moore for staff, I take it. So let's start with City Manager Troop.
Yeah, thank you. For the Planning Commission, their role in the process is really the oversight to make sure it complies with the general... Oh, you know, I say that right? The compliance with the general plan. You always get that wrong.
Compliance with the general plan. That's the role that's outlined for the Planning Commission in the municipal code.
Any follow-up, Councilmember Moore?
Yes. I was wondering if someone could pull up Attachment C, and I think it should potentially be retitled, because I believe this is supposed to be the five-year CIP budget or plan. And it's at the top of the page, it just says 2022 to 2023, but I think it extends out to 2027. And the category one new projects, I know we're focusing on the top seven, the Blackberry Farm, Pool Splash Pad, City Hall Reno, City Lighting, the LED lighting, buffered bike lanes, the all-inclusive play area Jolliman, major recreation facilities, use and market analysis, and the Stockelmeier Burn and Blash inspection reports and analysis. But if you scroll down, there's many projects in the gray shaded area, which are... They are less expensive. You have shade structures in multiple areas, the DOLA pathway. And I'd actually like to hear a little bit about each one of these projects, because it may be that swapping some of the items in the top seven out could get some good meaningful results that the community appreciates that can be installed, like these shade structures, fairly quickly. Also, when I'm looking at the fiscal policies on the CIP, I'm concerned about this, the future cost estimates, future operating and maintenance costs, and how the project will be funded aspect. Because when I look at this table, and I think it's supposed to be presenting it to us, and maybe it is, and I'm just not following it, when I look at the column marked revenue funding sources with the dashes, that concerns me, especially with the City Hall renovation, because the budget is at 79.6 million, proposed funding of 4 million, and then that would be in fiscal year 2024, 21.6 million, and then 54 million in 2025. Is... Are we anticipating that our general fund is going to have that much extra that it can fund these items? I'm concerned about that. What's the anticipated funding source for this very expensive project?
Let me start.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. And Director Morley, thanks for jumping in there.
Yep, thank you. Let me start with the first part of your question, which is sort of the five-year CIP versus the one-year CIP. We're bringing you sort of a five-year outlook of what the CIP could look like. This is an opportunity to provide input to us as we're structuring that, so that we can bring it back to you for approval at a future meeting. So certainly, there's an opportunity to move things around. Now, what we've done is provided you with what we think is the best program to accommodate our staffing ability. So if there's something that looks like it wants to move forward, or you'd like it to move forward in the timeline, we'd like you to provide that input to us, and then to the extent that we can do that, we'll make that adjustment as we bring forward the next version of the proposed CIP. With respect to budgeting, as I mentioned in the conversation on the work program, there's often a time where a project needs to be fully scoped, so that we can identify what the actual budget is. So these are really conceptual-level budgets on some of these bigger projects. And later on in the process, as the scoping gets refined, we'll have solid numbers, and from there, we would begin the discussions with the council on what the appropriate funding source would be. And the council can have the opportunity at that point to provide input on the scope, the size of the project, the ability to deliver the project based on financial assets or potential capacity for other funding opportunities. So this isn't a done deal. This is simply bringing it to that stage where we can nail things down and advance it to the next point.
Thank you very much, Director Morley. And Councilmember Moore, you still have your hand raised on...
Thank you. I'm still... And I think perhaps it would have been a benefit to the council if the policies were included as an attachment, and perhaps that could be brought up and put on the screen. But just to really hone in on what we've got here for policy, which possibly needs to have some alterations, but because it's saying, "Projects included in the CIP will have complete information on the need for the project, the project justification, description and scope of work, total cost estimates, future cost estimates, future operating and maintenance costs, and how the project will be funded."
Councilmember Moore, are you in the packet anywhere, so that we could potentially share with the public, or...
No, I'm looking at our CIP that we currently have.
Oh, the current...
Uh-huh.
That looks like it's the last fiscal year's CIP. Is that correct?
I have another one as well.
Okay.
But they each have this, the CIP policy in it. And then it says, "An objective process for evaluating CIP projects with respect to the overall needs of the city will be established through a priority ranking of CIP projects. The ranking of projects will be used to allocate resources to ensure priority projects are completed effectively and efficiently." And then you can make changes, addition of new projects and changes in scope and costs, but that will require the manager and city council approval. So what I'm concerned about here is whether or not we truly have complete information. And I feel that because projects moving forward, what we're being told is that we'll get more information as it becomes available. So we possibly don't have complete information. And that's why, like, when I was... The project has changed now, but looking at the homeless shelter concept, that understanding what that will ultimately cost us in the future, to me, is pretty important. And then the other item which I...
Well, before you go on, Councilmember Moore...
Sure.
Can you tell us what page you were on? Because you had a physical copy.
In the particular one I'm in.
The policies.
I'm looking at 2020 to 2021, and in that item, it's in the... I would call it the foreword on page...
Roman numer eight?
Roman numer...
Is that correct?
Little eight.
Okay, so let me do this. I'm tracking your comments. I'll go ahead and share this page that I've brought up here.
Thank you so much. And if you could just simply, you could maybe highlight those parts. So we need to rank these items, which I can't recall having ranked the CIP items. Perhaps we ordinarily do it.
Pulling at the right item here.
Yeah.
So again, fiscal policies, capital improvement policy, and then you were talking about ranking somewhere?
So under policy, the first paragraph there, I want to make sure that we're really... Are we really following this? Are we really getting all the information that the policy states that we will be receiving? And then we need to be ranking these items. So we need to come up with this subjective process, if we don't already have it, to prioritize the list.
I see.
And that to me is...
It looks like you're talking about this sentence here, "An objective process for evaluating CIP projects with respect to the overall needs of the city will be established through a priority ranking of CIP projects," correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to direct the public to the particular policies that you're referencing in your comments. And did you have further comments at this point, Councilmember Moore?
Well, I'm not sure I can bring this back up, but you had been discussing having a subcommittee regarding the seismic design, since we have brought that up regarding the City Hall. And I was reading the documents earlier today. If it can be suggested now, I would volunteer to serve on that subcommittee since it is interesting to me, how the seismic load safety factor changed in the code from 1.25 to 1.5. And so I am interested in that.
I think, let's take that when it comes back to us on June 7th, since that's part of the direction to come back in a consent calendar item, which of course, as Councilmember Way noted, could be pulled and perhaps expressly for this reason, to identify the subcommittee members. Anything else, Councilmember Moore, before we move on to Vice Mayor Chow?
Please move on, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, thank you very much for finding the policy. I've been asking every year, where is the ranking? How are they ranked? How come we only see the final list? And still we are only seeing the final list. And so I would like to understand, Planning Commission, the minimum role is to, for general plan conformance, but it doesn't really prevent them from providing input, even suggesting projects, just like they did for work program. And so I wonder, among all the projects that's proposed right now, was anyone that's added us through input from any commission? There is none, right?
Vice Mayor, you're asking a question of staff, and so let's refer that to City Manager Troop or other members of staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. I'm going to have to actually ask staff, like our director, Matt, to see if he had any discussion with these individuals.
Our commissions receive frequent inquiries from us, and they provide input to us pretty much throughout the year. But for the easy ones, the Bike and Ped Commission provided input into this, and I was there for that meeting, and their projects are identified in the initial staff report. The Parks and Rec Commission did the same, and their input is provided in the staff report as well. And then prior, when we were working on the library project, the Library Commission also provided input. So there's outreach continually with the commissions, and they're a significant influencer on what projects go forward.
Providing input in what format? I mean, did they help rank the project? Did they see the entire list of the project and provide input and rank them?
They saw the same report that you saw initially, which was all of the projects with their preferred rankings of the projects which they thought would go forward. So staff takes the input from the various stakeholders. We bring that all together, we have a discussion about it, and we make our proposed ranking. And that's what you have now, is our proposed ranking of the project. So the seven projects that we propose going forward in the next fiscal year, additional projects that we propose be ranked to go forward in future years, two through five.
For example, for Bike and Ped Commission, what is their ranking among all the bike ped projects? I thought they ranked the Carmen Bridge pretty high. So what exactly are their ranking?
Vice Mayor Chow, one moment. I'm sorry, Councilmember Way, you wanted to-
Okay.
I'm sorry, let me go ahead and let Vice Mayor Chow continue and finish with her comment.
Oh, right. Oh, in the last staff report. Yeah, now I remember reading that. Okay, so then, so they ranked the Bollinger highest. Okay. So then, so then for the list that we are seeing right now, so my understanding now is the staff ranked them. And but what are the criterias for ranking? What, how are they ranked? Could you clarify? Yeah, so thank you for sharing the screen on that. Yeah, seeing that, I remember reading it last time. Last time it was on the agenda.
And through the mayor, we did just finish a conversation about the rankings and the matrix of what elements go into that, and that's where the checkboxes across commission input, general plan, those kinds of things go into it. So there's a whole process we go through every year to incorporate various factors into the rankings, including these commission input.
So, but what, so the seven projects that's picked, exactly how they were picked? Because the order from this bike pad is totally different. So I am confused. How are those part seven particularly picked out of the menu of them?
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And we have a hand raised from our city manager. Did you want to speak to Vice Mayor Chow's question?
Just briefly, and if Matt wants to chime in after. So part of that is, once we get rankings from other people, say it's the Bike and Ped, or whomever it might be, we also then have to look at what is the, how much staff do we have available to work on whatever the project may be? The other big one is, do we have any funding for it? So if we don't have any funding for it, but we do on these three up here, then those are going to take priority while we look for another item that might take more funding, you know, be it the Carmen Avenue Bridge. We don't have any funding for that. We know it's going to be a few million dollars or more. So we'll have to find where can we get that versus if it's a smaller $50,000 for the Stockwell Meyer House, you know, we can easily do that one. So that's part of it. There's not a, it's not a precise, did you check every box? It's subjective, and sometimes something might be more efficient to be number two than number one. So we have to just go through all of those items.
So how about the Bollinger Road project? That was number one on their list.
Matt, do you know on that one?
Yeah, so there's great explanation for this, and I think Susan's probably the best with the knowledge to speak to them.
Okay, thank you, Jim and Matt. Susan, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Bollinger Road Improvements Project is a high priority for the Bike and Ped Commission. There was a study done in 2019, I believe, and a couple of options came from that study. We actually want to proceed with the project, but there's two mitigating factors. We need to have more input as to which options from that study to proceed with. And the other one is, as noted by council in the previous session, is that we need to coordinate efforts with West San Jose in order to move that project forward. Similarly, with Carmen Road Bridge, we are happy to move forward with that project. We need a little bit more time in order to scope it, since we just came to the conclusion that the right of way was not a problem any longer, and that we can proceed with that. But we have it in our projected fiscal year 2024 program so that we would begin the design process then. And part of this goes back to the bigger picture of, for us, that we need to have staff available to work on these projects. And so what we're ultimately trying to do is to complete a greater majority of the 40 active projects that we have, so that we have people available to move these projects forward.
Vice Mayor Chow, about how many follow-ups do you have at this point? Because I would like to ask a few questions, and I see a hand raised from Councilmember Moore as well.
I have quite a few.
Quite a few?
Three, three maybe, yeah.
Okay, so why don't you see if you can wrap those up? And then I'll go, and then Councilmember Willie, if you had any comments.
So I think we had a study session last time, and I see that some questions were answered in the supplemental staff report. But then I don't see any red line in the new document. So has there any modification been made because of the study session we had, or has there been no change?
Okay, thanks for that question, Vice Mayor. And City Manager Troop, any feedback on the red lines to this document?
I'm going to, Matt, did you have any input on that?
Yeah, happy to help on this. Yeah, so through the study session, we're looking to take input from the council. This is a continuation of that study session. So this is an opportunity for you to provide all of that input, so that, input in direction so that we know where we're going with the CIP. So the information that you provided last time and the information you provide tonight, we'll incorporate to the best of our ability into the future CIP proposal. So we're continuing to gather the information. I don't think we had direction at the last meeting. I think we might have started down the road of some motions, but not quite got there. So if there is direction through a motion or just through regular input, either way, it works fine for us in developing the CIP.
So you mean, at the last study session, you got nothing from that study session?
We have, we received lots of input from that study session, and this is a continuation.
We had questions which you answered, but you did not get any direction because we did not specifically make a motion.
So we would take the information from the beginning of the study session, because this is the continuation of that study session. So we would take the information from the beginning of the study session and from the conclusion of the study session, and fold all of that into the proposed CIP.
So, okay, so it sounds like even though the staff recommendation for today is not exactly to adopt or do anything, but we have to give clear guidance and direction, otherwise next time, we don't know which comment would get in or not, right? Okay, thank you for that feedback. And for the DOLA amenities, I understand that dog leash, I mean, dog dishes could be considered park amenity. But when I proposed that last time, I meant potential fencing, for example, for the Quinlan Knoll area, because that area is right next to a road. It's an area that's rarely used by anyone, but that, which is why it's ideal for DOLA. But that's a potential fencing that might not be covered. So I'm a little confused. So in case there is a need for that, what's the proper process to include this item? Should we include this now so that's part of, so we budget for that? And as the need come up, then we can implement? If there's no need, we don't have to? Or should we wait until someone requests it? But that may be mid-year.
City Manager Troop?
So over at Quinlan, that's going to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Matt or Susan, that will be part of the full Memorial Park master plan? Is that not correct? So to go and budget or start planning for something there when we don't have the master plan yet? So we'd rather wait. We don't want to put in a product fencing or whatever it is if that's not the best place for it, so.
You are already implementing two projects there? And this is in an area that's rarely used, and that's really not part of the main area that the master plan will be planning on?
Well, we don't know for sure yet until the master plan's done. And the two items that you're talking about, 85% of the one will have to be done regardless of whatever's, whatever we do has to be done. The other 15%, yeah, it's some irrigation and whatnot is not there, but it'll be another two years probably before we get through the whole process. But to go and put that in now, and then if the master plan comes back and says, no, don't have the DOLA, or whatever it might be over there, then we'll probably have some upset people because we put something in, then we have to move it or do something with it.
For the amphitheater also, I really think that should wait for the master plan because how that fit in with the rest of the master plan, we don't know. There are many options we can go with that. And I think that really needs to also come to the council so the public can provide input on what kind of things they want to see at the amphitheater. And then for the Danza Bike Land, my comment last time is to-
Did you have a comment?
If I may, with respect to the amphitheater and the improvements at Memorial Park, we are under, following previous council direction to move forward with those projects. Out of the Parks and Rec master plan, there was significant input from the public that those were highly desirable and that they should not wait, and they should move forward. So we're under that direction from the council. If the council wishes to change that direction, although the design of those efforts are moving forward and in process, especially the pond reconfiguration, the council can give us direction to change direction. We'd want to hear that in a sort of unified voice or consensus from the council.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Morley. And Councilmember Way, did your question speak to that?
Yes, because if I read it correctly, I was here last year, so I, the pond and the amphitheater were on our 2021, 2022 CIP plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have given direction.
It was on the plan, but it has never been on the council agenda for a study session on what it would look like. So it's on the plan. That doesn't mean staff should do whatever they want to waste that space.
Okay, let's wrap, Vice Mayor Chow.
I think we need direction, the public needs to provide input.
Okay, let's focus here. You said you had three more things. It sounds like you've only gone through one of them.
Yeah.
So let me go ahead and take the, take the dais back. We'll go through another round, and you'll have an opportunity to share your remaining thoughts here. So Councilmember Willie, did you want to go before me? Or, mine shouldn't be too long, but.
Go right ahead.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Let me go ahead and share the policies again, because I think that those are good to kind of visit here in the context of a project or two. Okay, so let me read the second paragraph here, under policy. "Projects included in this CIP will have complete information on the need for the project, the project justification, the description and scope of work, total cost estimates, future cost estimates, future operating and maintenance costs, and how the project will be funded." And I want to jump over to the fourth paragraph here, where it states, "Changes to the CIP such as addition of new projects, changes in scope, and costs of a project or reprioritization of projects will require city manager and city council approval." Okay, so the question that I want to ask is vis a vis specifically, what's going on with the million dollars that we allocated and is in the current fiscal year's CIP for the parking improvements to the Civic Center, as well as the seismic retrofitting of City Hall? Now, when you take these two items in conjunction with each other, as well as, frankly, the comments that were just made with regard to the amphitheater of Memorial Park and, you know, the other item related to that park, it seems like we should have, you know, more even treatment with regard to these particular items here in the Civic Center. So I'm just wondering, how was it that we were able to visit upon the public a nearly $80 million project that Councilmember Moore very, you know, very correctly pointed out that in two years in the future, we have a $54 million encumbrance identified without really any kind of indication as to how the project will be funded? And, you know, I thought it was a very understated question, but it was, you know, are we expecting to get that money? And to my knowledge, that's a definitive no. We don't have that expectation to get $54 million. And so why are we in the midst of the current work program in the current fiscal year, being asked to visit upon the Civic Center, something frankly completely different, when you consider these two aspects of the policy? So that's the first part of my question. Second part of my question is having to do with the prioritization of these items. And I think we do have commissions for a reason. The Planning Commission's, its scope is fairly broad. And so just because there is a specific delineation of compliance and conformity with the general plan, that doesn't mean that we can't ask that commission to go ahead and look at capital improvement program projects and, you know, provide an advisorial ranking, for instance. So I don't see why we're constrained necessarily. I know that it's late in this cycle for the upcoming fiscal year, but if we were to provide very explicit direction, why would we not be able to ask for that kind of evaluation and advice from our Planning Commission? And to the extent that the answer is we can't, what would need to change in order to allow us to do so? So those are my questions. And so feel free, you know, from staff, and to the extent that you miss any of the items, I'll go ahead and, you know, revisit them.
If I can, Mayor.
Yes, please.
With respect to the City Hall project, I think it's incumbent on staff to provide you with the project as we see the best alternative, but also with the options. And we've done that, we've got a list of options for you at this point, so you can see that there are opportunities to adjust that project. Our recommendation is- opportunities to adjust that project. Our recommendation is that once you start to weed through those options, that it starts to make sense to do the bigger project. But we would certainly expect that that to be that to be a conversation as the project develops. So as I've mentioned, this is very broad conceptual level scope, and there's much work to be done before we get to a final scope on that project. So much, much discussion, many meetings with the council to be had. And we would hope to begin to begin that process so that we can address the needs at the facility. With with respect to the long term funding for that project, as I mentioned, with many projects, we advance a project to through through a conceptual design, so that we have an idea of the value of the project, what the needs are. And at that point, we go look for money. And we do that a lot. The great example is transportation projects where we get them to that shovel-ready state, so that thirty-five percent design state where they're ready to go, so that we can compete for for other other people's money and bring that to the community. So that those are those are strategic elements of the of the CIP that we that we move forward.
So so Matt, though, I mean, I think you'd agree that there's money floating around for transportation and transit. There isn't so much money floating around for communities to build new city halls for themselves. I mean, isn't that pretty fair of a statement?
And so the discussion with the council may ultimately be that the council that we that we can't afford that, or we can afford a lesser scope. But we feel it's incumbent upon us to bring this forward as a need, so that you can incorporate it into the full discussion of the CIP and balance it with the other needs that the city has. So it's a it's a big picture look. And like I said, this is our opportunity to have that discussion with you and to see where where you stand on that and where you want us to move forward or where you don't.
Okay. And and on behalf of staff, I take it that if the direction is essentially conform the activity with regard to the existing work plan and the prospective future work plan, staff would, you know, take all measures to try to do so, correct?
We'll absolutely follow the direction that the council provides.
Okay, great. And then with regard to evaluation and working together with our our planning commission to try to get some get some conformance with these policies and rankings, City Manager Troop, did you, I think you probably wanted to speak to the prior item we're discussing as well.
Well, I was gonna do, I saw Chris hit his button, but I was just gonna say, currently the the commissions, I'll let Chris do it. It was just they don't, their background for the planning commission is not to do more than just compliance. But council could say, no, we want to send it back to them. We want them to review it and do do whatever. Or we can go back as a council and you can adjust the planning commission to do more, but I'll let Chris.
Okay. So I guess the critical question is, do we need some policy change or municipal code change even in order to ask our planning commission to do something like help us prioritize the rankings of the CIPs, especially given the fact that you have a policy stating that we need to conduct rankings?
So so the rankings wouldn't ordinarily be conducted by the planning commission. So the, you know, the planning commission's jurisdiction under the code is to review for a general plan conformance. I think that's standard across most jurisdictions in California. It's, you know, it's typical to have the commissions with jurisdiction over public works and parks participate in the process because these are public facilities. You know, and the planning commission, you know, would typically cut be cut get involved if there were, you know, an entitlement needed for a public project, for example. You know, you know, that said, there is flexibility in the code that would allow council to refer, you know, an item to the planning commission of this nature if if it chose to do so.
Okay, great. Well, I let me glom onto that very last statement that you made. So there's flexibility within the code to make a reference to the planning commission if it chose to do so for council. And so to the extent that we've gotten pushback in this go around, it sounds like this is really more a matter of timing. Is that because if we're at this stage and we're saying, you know, to help us out with kind of assessing the recommended action, right, the recommended ranking provided by staff, we would like to have our planning commission evaluate this in in terms of, you know, their own suggested rankings. That's something that would be within our purview to to ask for, correct?
Right. These are, yeah, these are these are policy considerations, Mayor. But I'd say it's a matter of timing and a matter of expertise, just because, you know, the planning commission does not typically oversee, you know, public works or or parks. You know, their their jurisdiction is typically over development and long range planning. So so those are the considerations I would I would keep in mind. But those are policy considerations for the council.
I see. I see. So so one of the, okay, okay, fair enough. So those are, those are my my critical questions. I had another topic, but let me go ahead and bring this to Councilmember Willie, because he because he hasn't had a chance to speak. I appreciate these these answers. And I'll just round this out by saying that, you know, we can have an improved process over time, you know, just based upon what makes sense. But but at the same time, I think we can be reasonable in terms of where we sit in in timing. So Councilmember Willie.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Matt, for a lot of the information you've been supplying. The first thing that I would toss out is that I'm real happy that Councilman Moore did find that policy page, because I really do feel that as time as time has progressed, just like with the work plan and probably with the budget, we're learning more and more how to be involved, which I think historically has not been utilized. So I I'm very happy that, you know, we're moving forward in terms of trying to make sure what the community wants is is what our focus is here. So that that being said, you know, I think that's great. So I look at, you know, Attachment A, and correct me if I get, you know, a wrong interpretation, but the list of all the items there, I get, you know, twenty-nine items. And so I'll start off with, you know, just like with the work plan, I feel the ranking is a strong message to the community. And so when I I look at, you know, this as, and I see number one, Blackberry Farm Splash Pad, and then city lighting up at the top, and I see Memorial Park and Lawrence Mitty Park, you know, down there at twenty-two and twenty-three, I would hope that in the future, we kind of use similar thinking with the work plan and create the list that, you know, really does have the priority. Specifically, when there's more than one item dealing with a particular place, I think equity means rather than do everything pertaining to one place, it really is spread across. Blackberry Farm, we've got Splash Pad, we've got golf course, we've got bocce ball. And then Linda Vista Park, picnic area is down at eighteen, Portal Park, picnic area is down at nineteen. So so I do think that, you know, it how we rank them, everybody in the community benefits rather than too much focus on Blackberry Farm. And, well, we didn't have enough staff time to do anything on Portal Park. So I'm not sure that what I've just said really plays out, but in terms of conveying to our community that that's how we're trying to be sure we have equity throughout the community. So the ranking, to me, is very important. And that's what we're kind of here for, to to help with that that process. That being said, couple questions that I have, and I wonder whether or not they're really CIP. Number six says major rec facilities market analysis. Maybe I'm confusing that, but major rec facility market analysis would seem like that belongs to Parks and Rec to really determine, you know, how the facility should be changed, expanded, whatever, to get maximum community usage. And so I asked that question. I'm not sure if maybe at the end you can answer, touch on a couple of these. Number twenty-five, major field, major facilities program. They're not ranked, they're not numbered on your list, but they're in order, and I gave each one one number. So number twenty-five, major facilities programming. There again, that strikes me as being more like the city manager's office in terms of, you know, facility programming. I mean, we've got the City Hall Annex, you know, the Tory building, and, you know, how those types of facilities will get utilized to the best of the community's desire. Okay, then two smaller ones that I'd like to bring up. Carmen Bridge, you know, it's got two lines, design and construction, construction one point four million. So I was contacted by some very passionate residents about the Carmen Bridge, and they clearly said, if if the city will commit to putting X amount of money in, they're willing to go look for the money that's needed to complement it. But they said, if the city just has it sitting there as a line item with with no allocation, they said that basically they can go and and try and find funding, but it's going to be a big no because the city hasn't made a commitment. So with that, I'd be supportive of, you know, getting the ball rolling if it's expected to be estimated to be one point four million. And we were to say, okay, let's go ahead and say, let's allocate five hundred thousand and see if they can go and drum up another million. Boy, bingo, it would be funded the next time we visit it. The other one would be the Stocker Meyer and Blech House at the Canyon Crossing Groundbreaking. Met with Sharon of the Historical Society, and she mentioned, wow, the Blech House and the Stocker Meyer House, but the Blech House would be an excellent place for the city's museum that is currently at Quinlan. And by being at something like the Blech House, man, you could put some some items that are vintage for that. Maybe tractor, plowing, some things inside the house so that when our kids do the field trip from their schools, they get a taste of what life was like in Cupertino in nineteen hundred, eighteen seventy. And so I would hope that that line item, which currently doesn't describe it like this at all, that the Stocker Meyer and Blech House be done in conjunction with the Historical Society. It may be that ultimately it doesn't seem plausible finance wise, how much for the city to maintain the house for them to use the house as a historical museum. Well, we're paying for Quinlan, you know. So if it if it is possible to take advantage of those, the fact that the Stocker Meyer House is right next to it and is older, and they could take that group of kids right out the back door and walk over to Stocker Meyer and say, you just saw what was nineteen thirties and nineteen forties. Let us go show you the eighteen seventies. Not not a full structure, but at least this is where they were. There's their orange groves, things of that nature. So I'm getting a little bit passionate, but that's why we're on the city council. So I'll make those comments and take the ball and run with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. And let's go in for the next round of comments here. Quick time check, we're a little bit past nine fifty. And so about another twenty, twenty-five minutes available for this item. So let's go to Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So just a quick reminder of our previous CIP totals that we've had in for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the CIP total of all categories was sixty-three point four million dollars. Fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, the grand total was seventy-four million dollars. And now we're looking at a grand total of around, I believe it's around a hundred and no, a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. So that's quite a jump. I think most of that is encompassed in the City Hall, which can be done a variety of ways. So going back to our fiscal policy and what our job is, that we have an objective process for evaluating the CIP projects with respect to the overall needs of the city, and will be established through a priority ranking of the CIP projects. So in my mind, we need to rank these items. The ranking of the projects will be used to allocate resources to ensure priority projects are completed effectively and efficiently. So you, Mayor Paul, you did have a question about how to make sure that Lawrence Mitty ranks highly. I think that's a great question. When I look at the category three existing projects funded, for instance, that is not a ranked list. It is done alphabetically. Our job is to put these items in a ranked list. And I don't understand how we have not been following the policy and ranking these items in the in the past, but that is what we are supposed to be doing. So I'm concerned about how we are going to go about ranking these existing projects. And then we've got new projects on the list. And with regards to new projects, I don't really know what we are supposed to do with the the ones that are in the shaded gray area. I think that poses a little bit of a problem if we're going to be trying to rank that whole list. So if anyone can throw out some suggestions for how we're going to rank these projects, I would welcome it. But that's our job. Thank you.
City Manager Troop, Jim, you have any suggestions for ranking existing projects that are funded? Those are category three item projects. As Councilmember Moore points out, they they're not ranked. They're funded, though. I mean, is it kind of like loving all your children equally? Or what's the story?
Yeah, that's well, and the one, the gray area, we're not looking at right now, unless you guys, unless the council wants to say, get rid of that one for sure and move one out, you mean?
Right. You know, Lawrence Mitty is particularly hard for me to kind of really talk about objectively. But I can say that it's it's really much harder for us to push it back now that it's been annexed, like I said earlier in this meeting, right? But I kind of had some understanding earlier when we hadn't annexed it. And, you know, we're trying to push it, you know, forward, but it was it was a twelve year slog to get it purchased, right? And then we ended up having the pandemic. We did miss a couple of cycles, frankly, in the San Jose, you know. But 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 if, you know, to Councilmember Moore's point, if we had rankings, right, and we had prioritized, you know, rather highly, then it would be more difficult, I think, for us to kind of look aside and say, oh, well, you know, this is just something that's funded, but we missed a cycle, right? I mean, so so how would we go about if we were talking about these category three projects that are funded? And the thing is, like, category three sounds kind of like a misnomer, right? You have category one, it seems higher. But category three is an existing project that is funded. How would we go about prioritizing this if we're trying to figure out, you know, where the bandwidth should end up for for stuff that we have money for and it's already on the list?
Oh, Matt has it. Yeah, I'll have to go to Matt because he'll be there.
Okay.
Mayor Paul?
And a quick follow up before we go to Director Marley, too. Councilmember Moore, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to point out that Lawrence Mitty is in the gray area. Lawrence Mitty Park, design and construction. So that would apparently not be considered on the list for new projects if you're looking at this year. So that, to me, is problematic.
Right. So let's let's go to Director Marley with a hand raised. Did you want to speak to this, Matt?
Yeah, so I think this dialogue is great. So thank you very much for the input. A couple of things that I'm hearing, one is that the category nomenclature on our projects, which are, you know, projects that we're recommending, projects that are funded, projects that are unfunded, is a little unclear to you. So we can make that adjustment for future years and not call them categories one, two, and three. What we were trying to do there is demonstrate our our categories of projects in terms of where we had money for them. So we'll make, we can make that adjustment. In terms of rankings, we've we've tried ranking projects in the CIP previously. I think what what works best for us is having a move these projects forward ranking and a don't move these projects forward ranking. So sort of a go no-go, on off type of a ranking. The reason being is that there's many opportunities over a course of a year that come up that that could move a project that is that you that you might rank as number three up to number number one. And a great example of that is grant funding, where there's a grant opportunity that that means it gets expedited. So it's important to leave a little bit of flexibility. That being said, simply your declaration at a meeting like this, or when we bring the CIP to you, that that there are specific projects that are of higher importance to you is a way for. you, that, that there are specific projects that are of higher importance to you, uh, is, is a way for, for you to, to carry that message to us, and, and we'll bring that forward in our, in our project delivery. Uh, with respect to Lawrence Midi, uh, we do have dollars associated with that project currently for design. We hear you, I think what we're hearing from the council tonight is that you'd like to see that project not go into a master planning phase, but rather just go straight through the design phase, and we can certainly make that adjustment. Um, and if that's, uh, if that's the, the consensus that we're getting from the council, uh, that's an easy one to make, and so that would, that would change and move, move dollars around in terms of allocations to allow us to fully design that project uh, in, in the short term and bring it to construction in the near term.
Well, I, I think Director Marley on that point, if I may, um, I, I guess there's just a consistency issue between category three Lawrence Midi, which is described as a master plan with a full budget of, you know, 5.4 million remaining, and then if you look at category one new projects, it's described in the gray area as Lawrence Midi Park Design and Construction, and under the total project budget, it only says TBD. There does, there doesn't seem to be an indication that, you know, in fact, for the last eight years, we've had all this money set aside for it. So I, I guess part of that is consistency in, in treatment, because if one were to look at this for new projects, category one, it almost looks like, well, we're going to try to find the money somewhere. Um, and, and, you know, to call it design and construction sounds great, um, under, under new projects, but it's already existing. It's been in category three for at least six years at this point, so.
And I think we're ready to move that project forward if that's the council's direction.
Okay. Um, well, so we have Councilmember Moore with the hand still raised, then we'll go to Councilmember Way for this next round, then Vice Mayor Chow, then back to me, and then we'll see if Councilmember Willie has any follow-ups.
With regards to funding for Lawrence Midi, um, isn't that in a, perhaps it's called a special fund for parks?
It, I was told that it was already allocated for Lawrence Midi in 2015, and it's just stayed there. And actually, in, in, in some of those early budgets in 2016, 2017, I had to specifically ask, hey, what's going on with this money? Is it moving forward to the next year? And, you know, that was answered in the formative by our then city manager and Dave Brandt and our, our, you know, current, um, you know, Administrative Services Director. So, so it has been moving forward for the last six years, you know, from budget to budget. So I, I mean, that, that, that much I know is accurate, but to kind of have sort of a new project categorization, I mean, design and construction sounds good, but the TBD on the funding, you know, I, I find that a little bit confusing.
Okay, uh, well, Mayor Paul, we do have these special revenue funds, um, Fund 280, the park dedication, um, fund, and it did have 9.6 million dollars. I think there was some more added to it from the Westport project.
Right.
And then there was the issue with the zones, uh, zone one, two, and three, and where that money would be allocated within the city. Um, so I think, I, I think there actually does need to be, uh, some information provided in this table that we have, um, for the revenue funding sources perhaps, um, that we're saying that we have a, a special revenue fund source for Lawrence Midi Park. And then also, um, along that line of thinking, the Memorial Park um, projects would have that zone funding attributed to it because that's next to the, being Westport. Um, that's because it's adjacent to that development, that that, the funds from that park improvement mitigation fee would go to, I would assume, Memorial Park. Does that make sense?
Well, it, it makes sense to me, but, but I, I think for the benefit of the public and the rest of the conversation, since we're both on the Audit Committee, we had a meeting, um, with our city manager as well as with Christina, the Director of Admin Services, uh, just, just to clarify your comment, there is a park mitigation fee, um, and, and so that's in a fund. Um, and then there are zones under, uh, the Quimby Act, um, that, that, that divide our city into three geographic areas. And so if the mitigation fee comes from a particular project in a particular area, in a, a particular zone, I should say, then the park that needs to get improved is in that zone. So, so from Apple Park, for instance, that came from a particular zone, that money was parked, so to speak, um, in, in Lawrence Midi, and it's been there for a number of years. Um, I pointed out in this conversation, which we had last Tuesday, right, because that was the, um, last meeting I took before the Sacramento, um, you know, conference, um, I, I pointed out, I was on the, I was on the Parks and Recreation Commission for seven years, and now I've been on the council for seven years, and that was never explained. In, in 14 years, that was never explained by staff that we're, under the Quimby Act, we're divided into three zones in the city, and that needs to be communicated, right? That needs to be communicated, just like when we had all this money from, from Westport come in, how come in the five months since it's been in, neither our Parks and Recreation Commission nor our city council has become aware of where this $9 million is going? Now presumably, it is going to Memorial Park, and that, that might be, you know, precipitating some of the activity, but we need to, you know, get informed about this. And so, Councilmember Moore, uh, yes, I do understand what you're saying, but I think that it probably needs to have been clarified to the public and, and certainly not, 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 not in your second round comments here, um, through, you know, our, our regular process of kind of communicating and outreach, um, because this is just really great information to be sharing, and also through public process, we probably, even though I think it seems fairly obvious that money from the Westport park mitigation fee would be going to Memorial Park, I think our members of the public would have something to say about it if they realized that we had this money and they would go to Memorial Park improvements. So, um, yeah, I appreciate the comments. Uh, did you have any others at this point before we go on to Councilmember Way for this second round of comments?
Um, well, I have some questions on two other, um, special revenue funds within the budget. The, the Transportation Fund, um, two seven, number 270, which has, um, over 10 million in it. Uh, it's like 10.8 million dollars in that fund, and we have a, a traffic impact of Special Revenue Fund, number 271. Um, it has a, quite a bit less, 468,000 dollars, but the 10.7 million dollars in the Transportation Fund, I'm curious what that would go to, if that's something that would, um, help fund the buffered bike lanes, for instance, or could it go to, um, the I-280 Trail?
Okay, so that sounds like a question for Jim or some other member of staff?
Well, I'm actually, I'm going to give that one to the man with his hand up, Matt.
Okay, uh, Director Marley.
Thank you. Yeah, so we, we will absolutely look at where we can allocate funds, especially in our special funds that have some restrictions to them, uh, to achieve projects like the 280 Trail or the Danza Bike Lane. So, um, we, we can, uh, provide that report out, um, and the allocation of funding with the proposed, uh, CIP.
And, and, and Matt, when it comes to the park dedication fee, what's the thinking from staff right now? Is that the Westport dedication, is, is the thinking that it's all going to Memorial Park, or how's that being treated right now?
So we were, we came into tonight thinking that we were going to do a master plan for, uh, for Lawrence, Lawrence Midi. Uh, it sounds like that we want to change that direction a little bit, so, uh, we, we can do that and look at the use of the funds, and, and we'll bring back a proposal on how to use those funds across the projects. By not, so the idea with a master plan is that you take a, a project, which is ultimately going to be huge, and, and you scope it and then phase it, so you can phase construction. Um, so the, the, the big numbers with Lawrence Midi may be a challenge, so we'll have to do a little bit of work on the, on the funding for that one. Uh, but I think there's a, there's an opportunity, uh, to, to recast that a little bit. Um, with respect to, to Memorial Park, we have some needs there as well, but again, it's going to be a master plan process where we have phases, and the council can have the decisions along the way on what phases to implement in what order.
Okay, uh, Director Marley, I, 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 I do want to thank you. That, that's a really clear and concise, straightforward answer. Um, and that's, that's a very good place to start. It's, it comes as a surprise to me, quite frankly, that we're, we're actually sticking this master plan into the Lawrence Midi process, and that was what, where, where staff's head was on this. I, I was under the impression that we're under a design and construction exercise, but in fact, there was more of an extensive master plan with phasing, you know, out there. Um, Councilmember Moore, did you have, uh, further follow-ups at this point before we go on to Councilmember Way?
I just want to point out that, that we need to have some updates in the, in our budget book, page 109, on the fund balances in the special funds. Uh, I'm not sure that they are accurate. Thank you.
Okay, as pertains to, okay, the, the, I, I guess there's a nexus here to, um, capital improvement program. All right, uh, Councilmember Way, your comments and follow-ups.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So like Councilmember Willie, I am very passionate about one specific project of my 11 years on school board. We've done over 15 capital improvement projects, and I'm very excited about our City Hall project. So I did extensive research on our City Hall, uh, history, so let me share this with you. Am I sharing? And I guess I'm not learning. No? No?
It's, it's up.
It is up, okay. So what I did is I started the history, right? 2006, there's a seismic report from AKH. 2011, structural analysis from AKH. 2012, essential service facility analysis from AKH. 2014 seismic study tipping by, by Tipping Mar, and 2021 City Hall Tier One seismic evaluation by MNE. So I read through all the reports, and I do believe this is a public safety, um, health concern for, not just for our staff, for people's staff, for people who visit city halls if something happens. So I understand we have budget restraints. Um, sorry, wrong side. And so what an exciting part of being a public official is, we actually not just have the obligation of allocating funds, make sure of fiscal health, um, that our city is running well, we provide service to our residents, but we also have the ability and the motivation to find funding for the needs that we have. So I do understand this is a daunting project. It's looking at 79.6 million dollars and without even, if we want a underground parking, it's probably going to be more. So the scoping that I think the, the staff is, um, proposing is just a scoping. It takes money for somebody to come analyze what are the options that we have, but if we have a shuffle-ready project that's being scoped, analyzed, ready to go, we can have opportunities to look for funding. And there are, um, opportunities for various source of funding that I believe if we can engage a professional, um, finance consultant that provide us options, who, how can we fund a daunting project like this? To me, this is a project we have to do. I mean, it's a decade-old discovery that our City Hall is not safe. Yes, we can move the emergency operations center into somewhere else. So I listened to Vice Mayor's comment last time. It apparently, we had done something, either Tim Borden or Roger Lee had some reports on, on this project in 2018, 2019, where I think Councilmember Moore and I were not on the council. So I've asked for that report, and I think, um, Matt was going to look for it. Okay, so I'm very interested in, in knowing what that report reports. And to go forward, if you look at this money-wise, oh, where's the money? Uh, looking at the money. So the report did say, our staff report did a very good job. If we do the City Hall replacement plus the parking, it, it doesn't have to be a three-story parking to be, because with our parking analysis, there is a need for parking for our civic center and library, especially with our library extension. We're going to have a lot of people want to visit us. So with that, the scoping may be 80 million dollars. With renovation and, um, instead of replacement, renovation, it could be 60 million dollars. If we don't work on the parking, the city replacement only maybe 55 million, and if we just do the renovation, it's 38 million. These are options for us to look, but I would like to have the opportunity to have professionals provide us a, a detailed analysis of what our options are. As for the funding, if we put, I don't know, 1, 2, 3 million dollars into it, just do the scoping, just do that options that we have. It is a very exciting project for us to find funding, and I, I do believe we can do this because I'm real passionate about this because I think it's a public safety issue. So we, we just have to do it, so, excuse me.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Councilmember Way, and I believe it was Vice Mayor Chow that was next, followed by Councilmember Willie and then myself. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, any follow-ups or comments at this time?
I have three questions, but I had more. Okay, so I was re, uh, actually regarding the DOLA fencing, uh, the city manager did not really answer my question. My question is, I use the Memorial Park area as an example if we identify an area that needs fencing, but it could be Montavista Park. So in terms of the process, what is the, the right process if we identify fencing might be needed to, for one of the low DOLA sites? Yeah. Should, could, should we allocate funding, um, so that as we pilot and then the, this would, could be identified? Or should I do like a mid-year request?
Okay, so fencing, fencing for a potential DOLA site, um, I'm not sure who to refer this question to between, uh, the city manager and, um, Public Works and Parks and Rec. Um, and one of the reasons I think is because, is, is that we don't actually have that project listed and teed up uh, for evaluation, but let's start with Jim. Jim, Joe, how would you suggest that we proceed if?
Well, the, the first thing is, is we've been talking since I've been not just here tonight, but since my arrival, is, you know, doing the public outreach. So we really need to do the outreach. We know those that are, that want the DOLAs enjoy it, but we still have to go out and do that outreach to make sure, you know, it's, is it the right park, it's the right place in whatever park. Um, so we need to make sure that part is done. The fencing itself, and I'll look at Matt, I don't think, or Christine, I don't think we'll have an issue from a cost perspective because it's, you know, we're not fencing 10 acres or anything, you know, it's a smaller cost, most likely chain link of some kind, you know, three feet tall or whatever it takes to keep them in. Um, I don't think that's going to be as onerous to find that funding as it is to make sure that we have the outreach, we have the right park, we have the right place in the park, um, we have the accommodations leading up to it. That's, that's the part, it's not just going out and saying, let's put one right there because there's other issues. And, and Matt, I don't know if he has any additional.
So you mean because the amount is, is small, so we can worry about that when, um, there is a, a need? That's fine.
Yeah, to me, it's relatively small. I mean, when you're looking at, like, the City Hall, millions to thousands, you know, I don't think it's much. Matt, do you have any ideas?
Yeah, this is, yeah, you're, you're right on there. The, the cost of the fencing and the implementation of the fencing is fairly straightforward. I think we were, we were working under guidelines of what the process would look like towards establishing sort of a, uh, going from a, a pilot to a, a more, um, more installed type of DOLA, and so there was a little bit of, of work still to, to, to go as you, as you had, had mentioned, City Manager.
Okay, that's fine. Um, so for the, the Anza Bike Lane, I, I think I commented the last time, I am not sure just paint, painting the, is, is sufficient for that area. I would like other options to concede, to be considered because it is a very busy street. Uh, but I didn't see any change. So is there a, any reason this is not accepted?
Um, I'm going to ask Matt on that one thing.
Yeah, we, we haven't made any, um, we haven't made any changes to, uh, to what we had in the initial meeting as a continuation of the study session that's going on tonight. Uh, the bike plan, uh, that we have does have buffered bike lanes, uh, noted for that area. Uh, bike, uh, the painted lines work a lot better when there's a lot of driveways, which is typical for Danza, so, uh, that, that would be the, the recommended solution for that particular corridor.
Sorry, sorry, which one is recommended solution, painting or buffered lines?
Painted.
The, the painted.
The painted, okay.
Um, can you, uh, send me any documentation on that later?
Sure, we can get to the bike plan with that, uh, that project.
And regarding the five-year CIP plan, I did not really find it. Attachment C has a five-year outlook, but it's not really a five-year plan. So is there a different five-year plan, or the five-year CIP plan just refers to the table with a five-year outlook of the current year plan?
Uh, please, go ahead, Jim. Vice Mayor, no, that's typically that you have the five-year outlook. You, we, I've been places where there'll be a large, you know, we could have multiple books almost of projects, but, um, a lot of those would be, you know, the first year, second year, after the fifth year, and then there might be another one where it's out for a total of 10 years, and those are just, if we ever got to them, kind of ideas. And those are just, if we ever got to them, kind of ideas because there's no funding. But here, what we're doing is, is the five-year lookout, yes.
So that may be it's better to call it a five-year outlook. Because with the five-year CIP plan, I would expect we say Carmen Bridge next year, Stevens Creek Phase Three in the following year, so those are, so you'll have projects identified for year two and three. That will be a five-year plan.
If, if we have the funding available, that's one thing we can do, but...
No, I mean, just use a better terminology so we get, don't get confused. And, yeah, so it's a five-year outlook. Yeah, okay. And then for the Blackberry Splash Pad, I will share the screen here. The staff report still says that the splash pad concept is included in the Parks and Rec system master plan. So I'd want to clarify, this is what's included. For Blackberry Farm, for Splash Pad, the Blackberry Farm is, did not, was not identified. The master plan says that water play features such as splash pads, spray play area interactive should be geographically dispersed in the city. And specifically about Blackberry Farm pool complex, it did not talk about any expansion. It just talked about continue to operate, that's all. So it did not mention, so, so it really is not complying with the master plan to add Splash Pad at Blackberry Farm. I would recommend that we replace that item by identifying, identifying a location for Splash Pad so that water play area is geographically dispersed in the city to comply with the plan.
Mayor Paul?
Yes, Councilmember Moore.
I just, I want to point out that the Vice Mayor is sharing the indication that perhaps the planning commission should have made a finding that the proposed projects are actually not compliant with the general plan and other, other plans within the city. And I believe that Councilmember Willie said something somewhat similar with regards to equitable distribution and, and that, that's been an ongoing problem with regards to parks in particular because they, there's, there's so few of them on, on the east side of Cupertino that when improvements are made, it tends to always be inequitable because of that lack of, lack of distribution of these parks. Thank you.
So I have three more points.
We're going to move on. Vice Mayor Chow, it's, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm ready to, I'm ready to make a motion if you are done.
Well, let's, let's give the opportunity for Councilmember Willie and myself to get our second round comments and then we'll entertain your motion. Vice, Councilmember Way?
Actually, I kind of agree with the equity thing. So maybe when we do Lawrence, Lawrence Smithy Park Plan, we can do a Splash Pad there and that would be great. And, but for Blackberry Farm, I think it's not because the staff want to put a Splash Pad. It's because the slide is, oh, they need to replace it with something. And I, I, I think that to disperse it evenly throughout the city, I don't see a Splash Pad on Blackberry Farm either. So I, I think if we don't do it, that's okay, but they have to get rid of the, the slide or replace a slide. So it has, something has to be done at Blackberry Farm. So I have a procedural question for the staff.
That's a very long sentence, Councilmember Way.
Sorry.
So let me, let me go on to Councilmember Willie at this point.
One question, a procedural question, can I ask you?
Very fast.
Okay, very fast. So if we say we approve this project and then we open up to public comment, probably some, we don't want a Splash Pad, what, what's, what's going to happen? We can do something else or what's the procedure to do that?
If the council doesn't want to do that?
No, if the public doesn't want to do it.
Well, we go back, we have to go off of what the council says.
Yeah, your microphone is off, Councilmember Way. Councilmember Willie?
Great, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to follow up and touch on a few points. Of course, safety is fundamental. Safety is fundamental. But if we're incorrectly characterizing something, then we're not doing people's service. If we're driving a Ford that's two years old, that's never been in an accident, it's a safe vehicle. If it's been in an accident and it has flaws in it or it has not been maintained, then it's not safe. I've read through all those documents that were attached and how they clearly say that that building was built in nineteen sixty-five and it today is still like the building that was built in nineteen sixty-five. The people that walked into that building in nineteen sixty-five would be doing the same thing by walking in that building today. When this came to us before, I asked Matt, I said, Matt, we had the Loma Prieta earthquake in nineteen eighty-eight. Is there any damage to city hall? Is there anything that needs to be addressed because of a safety issue because of that? And the answer was no. What we're talking about is the codes are different from nineteen sixty-five to now. But all buildings that were built in nineteen sixty-five were built with the same codes. They're all around San Francisco and they're, city hall is a one-story building with a basement. Go to San Francisco and look at the old buildings or downtown San Jose, five stories, ten stories, twenty stories. The, the concern goes up with story height. So we need to keep things in perspective. By all means, we want the experts to do a thorough analysis and bring us back what the true options are. And the options are many different things that have not been brought to us. Should the EOC be moved out because would the codes say if the EOC is in city hall, it's considered a risk category four, just like a hospital with emergency? Whereas if it's not in there, then it's a risk category two. And that's where your, that's where your factors of one point oh, one point two-five, one point five come from. What's it classified as? So where might the EOC go? Maybe even Community Hall that was built in nineteen seventy-seven. So we need to make sure that we have that. Another important factor in, in staff's recommendation was to enlarge city hall from twenty-four thousand square feet to thirty-six thousand square feet, twelve thousand square feet. In nineteen, in two thousand and nineteen, staff said they wanted an additional ten thousand square feet. We bought Torrey, fifty-six hundred square feet. We've just given them half of what they asked for. Now, let's look at another important factor, and that is the pandemic has now got people working from home. When we talk about needing more space today versus five years from now, how has the pandemic changed that? So these factors need to come to us so that we can determine what's the right, the right decision for this community. We've got an annex building that needs to be integrated into city. We need to look and see how city staff is going to be working going forward. We need to truly look at, is the EOC going to be here or moved out? What about the parking? How much parking do we feel is, is justified? It's not free. And so how much parking is justified? With all those things on the table, with experts answering our questions, I believe we're going to be able to make the right decision for the community. If we jump out of fear, oh, it's not safe. That eighty million dollars can't, can't get given back to us. Once we've signed up, it's gone. And that's going to be debt that our community is going to have to service for thirty years. So, you know, please, let's, let's be sure we're, we're not jumping without really having the situation well-understood. A project of that scope clearly needs to be done with city council and the community's input and the city manager and how the staff is going to be, you know, comprised going forward. So, yeah, this building, it's no different today than it was in nineteen sixty-five. So, okay, thank you.
I'm going next. I know people have their hands up, but Vice Mayor Chow, I'll go to you with regard to your motion after, after my comments, so. So thank you for that, Councilmember Willie. I, I think speaking to that and also examining our current fiscal year, if, if, video, you can put up the shared screen, thanks. We actually have two items that have to do with the civic center as well as city hall already in our current fiscal year. My cursor's on the civic center parking analysis. A million dollars is allocated to that. The remaining balance is eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars. The city hall and community hall improvements is another existing work plan item, programming and feasibility. Five hundred thousand dollars is allocated to that. The remaining balance is four hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. This is as of March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, but I'm not expecting a lot has been done. Similar to, not, not a whole lot was done in the first three quarters of the fiscal year. So if you add up four hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, you get roughly one point three million dollars. You know, my, my suggestion is that city staff take what city council is telling you. And, you know, I, I realize that these numbers are no longer in equilibrium with each other, which is good. You know, it's good that we, we have, you know, these hard numbers repeated through our finance department. There was no way that there was, is basically equal to retrofit and to make a new city hall. It's a twenty million dollar delta as of right now. I, I suggest that we go back and do the work that we've already empowered in this current fiscal year and finish it in the next fiscal year. When you combine that with our work plan discussion, hopefully, we put together this, this subcommittee and it can work with our city manager and our director of public works with good leads from the community, you know, the, again, the person who, who, who made the retrofits in nineteen eighty-six, a couple of years prior to the Loma Prieta quake that John is speaking of a moment ago, is still around and, and is, you know, willing to talk to us. So let's, let's take advantage of what we've already empowered and directed, finish that work and, you know, see what our options really are. I, I don't see that any of us have a desire to create an unsafe condition or have an unsafe condition perpetuate. But it, it does seem that as we're pushing back a little bit more over just the last couple of weeks, the story is changing a little bit. It's no longer really the same cost to build a new city hall and to do these retrofits and enhancements and improvements to existing city halls. So, well, I mean, let's, let's follow this path and see where it takes us. Maybe we get more cost savings, maybe we get, you know, better value for our, you know, plans for the future. And then the other couple of items I wanted to speak about before we entertain a motion. Bullinger Road, you know, I, Bullinger Road is a real issue in terms of public safety. We've had a couple of pedestrians cross that street in the last several years, three years at the most. They got hit, they were killed. And so I, I'm, I'm, I'm all for bike lanes and bike infrastructure. But if we're not working with San Jose to try to figure out how to make that safe, then I really wonder whether we're really focusing upon the right thing there. So, so that's my comment on that. Memorial Park changes, Director Morley had indicated that he would need some explicit direction on the amphitheater and the ponds, you know, vis-à-vis where we were. I, I think things have changed. You know, we have a significant amount of money in the park mitigation fee. And again, you know, these are zones broken down in Cupertino into three zones. I'm assuming that the Westport Park mitigation fee is allocated in Memorial Park. But when you really look at the budget, it doesn't look like there's been, you know, a specific fund identified in a particular zone for the Westport, you know, park mitigation fee. So, so we should, we should examine that. I think the, the equation has changed though, assuming that it's in that same zone that's literally across Mary Avenue. So that, that, yeah, certainly, that's something that we can look at. Lawrence Smithy, you know, personally, I, I just want to see a good space ultimately and not, you know, foot dragged and not, you know, dragged for the purpose of basically prolonging the experience such that people might, you know, be opposed to it. You know, look, we've, we've bought it, we've annexed it. We've, we've, we've engaged a consultant. Let's get this done in an efficient and effective manner. I mean, that, that's really my bottom line on that. Yeah, so, so those are my comments before, you know, if we want to give more specific explicit instruction to staff at this time. And Vice Mayor Chow, you had indicated that you wanted to put forward, okay? So why don't we, at this point, since we've gone through two rounds of comments, why don't you put forward your motion? We'll see if we have a second, and then we'll call on Councilmember Moore first for any comments.
My motion is long though, so it's better that we hear, it's better we hear from Councilmember Moore first.
Councilmember Moore, what, what's the nature of your comments? Are they, are they quite lengthy as well?
Not really. So just to bring this back up, we, it says that we, the objective process for evaluating CIP projects will be established through a priority ranking of CIP projects. So we, we need to be ranking these. So that's, that's our policy. We're supposed to rank them. Going back to the EOC item, so in nineteen eighty-six, the EOC Emergency Operations Center was brought into the lower floor of, of city hall. And it had been a previous basement area. They opened up the north wall and added glass, so they changed the configuration. And as Councilmember Willie was explaining, that the seismic load factors have changed throughout the years. And when you, when you go to add an EOC to the building, it puts you in risk category four. And currently, I believe it's a one point five load factor for your seismic load as opposed to a one point zero. So you're, you, it increases the amount of seismic design essentially that you've got to do on the, on the building. Now, when I was looking at the city of Sunnyvale, their EOC, they've got a new plan, they're building it next to their police station. When I looked at the city of San Jose, it's, it's not in their city hall either. It's, it's kind of, it looks like it's fairly close to their police station and the jail, but it's in a different location. And I'm kind of wondering if the, the EOC potentially, and I've heard the, the idea of it being at the yard, but I'm wondering if it could possibly be more appropriately located near our sheriffs, possibly? Or I've heard of a, an idea, conceptual idea to expand this building to the north where you have a small courtyard there now, but could this building be expanded and have the EOC put there? But I'd, I'd actually like to hear strategically about where, where an EOC would most appropriately be located in the city. To me, I think where the sheriffs are. But that's, that might not be the best place, but I think we should look in terms of, of that and then, and then work, work from there. So to me, the basement of city hall is not, is not perhaps the best location and that we might want to have it separated out. So I'd like to actually have some advice on that because it makes a difference for the, for the renovation of the building. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Jim, did you want to speak to that comment before we go to Vice Mayor Chow's motion?
No, no, thank you. As Mayor, as Councilmember Moore pointed out, typically, an EOC will be either located in or near, excuse me, in or near a public safety, be it police or fire. If we don't have that, because we do contract out for both of those, then it usually will reside somewhere within the city facility. I would recommend what, you know, the, the matchup with the sheriff is a good idea, but I think the other side is having them have a separate one from theirs because they'll already have an EOC that they will have, sheriff has a large one. But having a, a substation, if you will, of our own that they can send their deputies to for us and the other cities that they surround and help out, yeah, is... Yeah, is it in the City Hall? Is it an addition here? It should be somewhere accessible. Going down Mary Avenue is a little tougher just because it's, you know, towards a dead end, more or less. It does have space restrictions over there. We'd have to tear down one building to put up another one also. So, I don't have a good spot right now, but it is something that is usually more centralized so you can get to it. Go ahead.
Mayor Paul, I just wanted to clarify. So, did our sheriffs already have an EOC of some sort at their location?
At their main location, they would have one. Not on Deans, though, there.
Not at the satellite?
No, that's just a satellite office for them. I can do a follow-up, but it wouldn't be the same type of setup that we would have here, from my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, let's go to Vice Mayor Chow's motion.
I'll first make two short comments. This is a mobile EOC. Palo Alto has this. We can park it at the service yard and then move it anywhere as we need. Maybe this could be considered.
But is that Palo Alto's only emergency operating center?
I don't know. So, we can consider that, yeah.
All right. Well, why don't you make your motion, Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Before that, I would like to share some comment about the City Hall. I'm very passionate also about earthquake retrofit for the City Hall. And as, and we should know that, everyone should know, we already have adopted the item in these years, but CIP plan. And this item specifically says we will bring this building up to meet code standards. And so, this include retrofit. If it's not clear, we can make it so that it includes retrofit. And then this item, it has not come to the council for any study session or any update. And so, that's just focus on implementing what we already have. No one is, I think we all approve this. We all think that retrofit is important. As for the funding, the previous city council back in 2015 also considered a $5 million budget for a design firm to design City Hall. At that time, the public commented that they would like to know where is the funding source before we spend $5 million on a project that might cost 70 or more million dollars.
Vice Mayor, let's get to the motion, honestly. I mean, our time allocations are really quite.
The council asked for options for revenue sources, and I don't know what happened. So, please bring us information about what revenue sources. But that council decided not to pursue City Hall. Why? So, I think we need information on that.
Yeah, no, we can't have foregone conclusions about revenue sources. I, you know, that's, yeah, no, I completely agree with that.
Yeah, okay. So, here is my motion. First, I'd like to replace the BlackBerry splash pad with an item to identify locations for splash pad.
Okay, let's back up a step. So, I'm sorry, let's back up a step. What's your base? Adopt the what? Adopt the recommended action with the following?
Today's recommendation is not to adopt anything.
Okay, so your motion is to give specific instruction?
Yeah, we have direction.
Okay, so, video, if you could put the shared screen back up, please. Okay, so you're saying adopt the following is what you're saying on this motion? Is that correct? Okay.
Adopt the following modification to the current proposed staff plan.
All right, thanks.
But then we are not adopting the whole plan. It's so that, so that this is geographically dispersed. And then I'd like to change the Azabobradland item to the Azab Boulevard Bike Land so that we consider other options, as I mentioned earlier. So, more specifically, changing that language to this language to include the painted, yeah. And then remove major recreation facility use and market analysis. This is a major item. I don't think we have the funding for any outcome that's coming from the plan that's not spend more money, planning something we cannot afford. And remove City Hall renovation and replacement. Library parking garage design and construction, since we already have an existing item. That's not complete. The existing item already include retrofit. That's complete that item. If after we get an update and study, we decide we want a City Hall, then we could propose the City Hall item after that. And then I'd like to add Portopark picnic structure in the recommended list. And I'd like to add Bolinger Road bike improvement to the recommended list. And I'd like to include this direction to the staff for process to follow. And the council should provide ranking for those items recommended and unfunded. And they will be presented when the item comes back. I guess if we do that, then we don't have to do this, the first two items. I can remove that. And anyway, I'll just finish that. So, I would like to see an estimate of staffing for each project to help with prioritization. Because we, for the ones that's not in the recommendation, we know, we get an answer. There is no time. But how much is effort compared with those that's on the list and those that's off list? We don't know. We only see dollar amount, but dollar amount are construction and design cost, which is usually done by consultant. So, how much is the staffing cost? I think we need to know that. Specifically, comparing these three bike path project, I would like to know. And I would like to ask, this is very important, that staff should come to the council to get approval for conceptual design of any CIP project. And so that, so the public can provide input before going ahead with the design and construction. For example, there is no approved conceptual design for both the pond and amphitheater project. And I searched and I searched, I couldn't find a conceptual design for the pond. And the staff pointed out a very old plan on some agenda that no one approved. And it's the same thing. City Hall Annex, it seems it's already going out for bid, but we have not even approved the conceptual plan. I, and then I think we should consider amending some document. I'm not sure. So that we not only consider compliance to the general plan, but also compliance for existing master plan in the future. So that they, the existing parks master plan, bike master plan is checked by corresponding commission before CIP for next year. So, these are.
Okay, under Bolinger Bike Path, you mean, just to clarify, you mean Bolinger Road Bike Improvements, right? Under that square, the dark square, lower, lower on your cursor, lower, right there.
Oh, yeah.
You mean Bolinger Road Bike Improvements, right?
Yeah, I didn't get.
All right, just to be consistent with what you're describing. Okay, is there a second for Vice Mayor Chow's motion?
Mayor, may I?
Yes, Chris, go ahead.
I'm going to suggest that the last bullet point of the Vice Mayor's motion be considered as a proposal for a future agenda item because I'm not sure that it's germane to the topics that are agendized at this meeting.
Which you consider to be the current upcoming fiscal year CIP? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're.
The direction to consider amendments to the Parks and Recreation Commission's jurisdiction.
Well, but you did say, City Attorney, that we could instruct staff to go back in the future within the purview of our authority to, you know, look at, you know, rankings, for instance, when we were talking about it. But we don't need to put it in this motion, right? I mean, we could basically, then where would we put this? I guess is the question.
Well, perhaps, I mean, the Vice Mayor could clarify her intent. I'm not sure if the intent was to amend the municipal code to alter the Parks and Recreation Commission's jurisdiction.
Well, but just kind of, I guess my question more directly is, you're not of the opinion that we would need to amend any code in order to provide that direction, right?
No, not necessarily. I just, maybe the Vice Mayor could clarify that whether her intent was to ask, seek a code amendment or not.
So, I change the language, does that work?
Why don't you share that again, or video, can you put that?
I think it's still here, yeah. For next year, the council direct refer, how do I say that?
Directs applicable commissions to consider compliance with existing master plan.
CIP items to respective commissions to consider.
Yeah, just respective, not respectively.
No, respective. Commissions to consider compliance with existing master plans.
That's fine. Yeah, council directs staff to refer. Is that workable, or is that still outside of the purview, in your opinion of?
I think that's germane to the CIP agenda item.
Okay, okay. The council directs staff? That's fine. Okay, so is there a second for this motion? Okay, a hand raised from Councilmember Willie. Are you seconding?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, now we have a hand raised from Councilmember Moore, and then one from Councilmember Way.
Okay. So, because the policy states that we need to be ranking, I'd like to kind of simplify and make a suggestion that alternatively, we go to Attachment C, and we rank the Category One New Projects. There's like 25 of them, so eight fives, eight threes, nine ones. And then we move down to Category Three Existing Projects Funded. And there's, it looks like there's 24 of those, eight fives, eight threes, and eight ones. And we come back with the total ranking at our next meeting on this item.
Friendly amendment from Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Chow, are you amenable to that suggestion of rankings? And Councilmember Moore, do you have timings of rankings suggested here?
Mayor Paul, this is not a friendly amendment. This is simply to come back with a ranking of new projects and Category Three Existing Projects Funded. I don't think we're, for the existing projects with multi-year funding, I don't think that there's any qualms with the ADA improvements, playground replacement, park amenity improvements.
Okay, if it's not a friendly amendment, then how do you effectuate?
Substitute motion.
Oh, substitute motion?
Yes.
So, you're substituting the entirety of Vice Mayor Chow's motion with your suggestion? Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a second for Vice Mayor, sorry, Councilmember Moore's motion? Forcing a ranking?
Comment?
Do you want to second it for the purpose of comment? Or do you want to just?
Just comment.
Okay, brief comment.
Yeah, I don't think it captures all of what's in the motion that's on the table. So, I think we're being left with only a piece. I'd like to see the motion have everything. If it's not going to be a friendly emotion to Vice Mayor's, then I would say, take the part from the Vice Mayor's and put it in that so that we have a motion. One way or the other, you know, a motion, that we don't have to do a motion and then another motion.
Okay, well, let me go back and ask again. We'll go to the movement of the substitute motion. Councilmember Moore, would you be willing to reconsider your substitute motion to incorporate Vice Mayor Chow's motion contents?
I don't have a second. I'm not really sure that I need to be altering mine. But if the original motion, if the Vice Mayor wants to make an alteration to what she has, that's her prerogative.
Okay, there being no seconder for the substitute motion, let's bring it back to Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow, would you be willing to amend your original motion that's on the table to incorporate the ranking system suggested by Vice, excuse me, Councilmember Moore?
So, I, so I remove the ones that's just about adding and removing. But then the first two items are changing the language. I think it's important. And then for the ranking, I think I made it clear here, we are ranking the Category One items in Attachment C. In, I think, Attachment C, yeah.
Okay, so would council be providing those rankings as Councilmember Moore described?
Yeah, what was that? What was the ranking you suggested?
So, I believe there are 25. I have eight fives, eight threes, and nine ones.
Five?
That's nine. Eight fives, eight threes, and nine ones.
Through the mayor, I did want to see, and I think this might provide us as a council with some of our opinions about how the rankings should be. But I would like to actually see us go through the exercise of ranking the Category Three items.
Vice Mayor Chow, would you be willing to add the ranking of Category Three items as well to your amendments to your motion?
Category Three items, those are already existing project.
Those are existing, but they're not ranked.
Correct. You want us to rank separately or together?
Separately.
Okay.
And I just for the, I want us to go through the exercise to see what our feelings are about these projects because we do have the prerogative to change the CIP, changing the scope of projects and things of that, and reprioritizing the projects. Because we don't really have a sense of how they're prioritized now.
Okay, Vice Mayor, so it would be eight ones instead of nine ones in the one that you're on right now? No, 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 not that one. That one is correct. No, just change it, just change it back to nine. And then the next one is eight.
Next one is eight.
Okay, so timing, can we, can we parallel the timing with our other rankings for work plan where council will be sending in these rankings to staff by noon next Friday? Is that a workable timing? Jim, is that okay with regard to providing us some kind of ranking sheet?
Yeah, I think we can do it. I just want to make sure we understand, too, that the number three, some of those are already under contract, so we have to keep going.
Well, but I guess it's still harmless to kind of rank the.
Yeah, it's just, some of those, I just want to let you know. It's like, well, it came in last, well, we already could have a contract.
Right, their existing projects are funded, and, okay, so take it under advisement. But with, you know, an eye on the reality of the situations. Okay, so Vice Mayor, you have a motion on the table. And let me ask your seconder, Councilmember Willie, are you okay with those modifications?
Yes.
Okay, motion has been amended, and those amendments are seconded. Any other comments at this point? Councilmember Way, yes? You need to turn on your microphone, Councilmember Way.
We're not approving any CIP project. This is going forward for.
At this point, no. It seems like, and let me just check in with staff so that we have a common understanding here. The CIPs are coming back to us following this direction to staff, correct?
That's how I understand it. It'd be similar to the work plan where it's getting re-rank.
Okay, it does seem like there is some meaningful feedback coming back, and this item is coming back on June 7th. I'm assuming, I'm assuming we're not having a special meeting before the June 7th meeting to revisit this.
Yeah.
Okay, because otherwise, our timings would have to change a bit. Okay?
And one more question?
Yes, Councilmember Way?
That's with staff. Is enough time for our budget to be included and pass it before June 30th?
Christina Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services. Thank you for, sorry, Mayor, is it okay if I?
Oh, no, please, go ahead, yes. Christina, Director of Administrative Services.
Sorry, this is better. So, yeah, that should be sufficient time. We'd be looking at that June 7th date. And the way we would, excuse me, the way we would incorporate the CIP changes, we would actually list them, each project separately for approval. My guess would be working with our CIP team based on the ranking and funding availability that council would do for the rankings.
Okay, and one more question.
Okay, Councilmember Way?
So, I do have an issue that the BlackBerry Farm pool thing is totally off. That slide is not safe. What do you want the staff to do about it? And when we talk about equity, there is no splash pad in a website either. You have to say east-west. So, I really think we need to include that in, at least be considered in the ranking.
Okay, Councilmember Way, you know, we can ask Vice Mayor Chow if she would be willing to put that back into the BlackBerry Farm plan. But my understanding of her motion is to remove that from the considered items being ranked by us and to replace that with a more broad-based geographic consideration of where to place those splash pads within our city.
That does not exclude the BlackBerry Farm. That does not exclude the BlackBerry Farm, right? It's just says we to consider splash pad geographically dispersed in the city. We could install two.
That's true.
And, and also, I think the staff report said already that if we don't do splash pad, they'll just remove the slide, so that's understood. It will be removed. I do have a concern about safety of a splash pad right next to a pool though, because splash pad is under
Okay, let's, let's, let's not get in, okay, okay.
Fall into the pool.
All right, so, so that's, please, that's collateral to your motion at this point. I think the clarification has been provided. And, all right, let's go ahead and vote, vote with our lights on the motion on the table.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. All right, so we're, I think, moving along nicely here. It's just shy of eleven o'clock. Let's return at eleven oh five. Hopefully, we can get some significant work done on the budget in this remaining hour that we have when we come back. All right, we'll see you in a few minutes. We're at eleven oh five and we're back to item number forty-one on our agenda. This is the last item on our agenda this evening. And it is our initial study session on our upcoming fiscal year, that's twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three proposed budget. We do have our Director of Administrative Services, Christina Alfaro. The presenter is listed in the agenda as Thomas Leung, our Senior Management Analyst. Jim, do you want to?
I'm actually gonna, thank you, Mayor, I'm gonna kick it off for a minute.
Okay.
They gave me a couple of slides to talk about.
Okay, excellent.
They said, we trust you a little bit, but
There you go.
So I, I just, you know, a good evening to the mayor and council. And, and before we do jump into it, one, I want to just say, this is exciting. It's the first, my first budget here in Cupertino. Not my first budget, but the first one here for the city, so it is very exciting. And I'm pleased to be able to present, well, not me, but Christina and everybody will be presenting a balanced budget. But I do want to thank the budget team, the department directors, all of their staff, and all the hard work because this, this you'll see when it starts. It's not just a quick, easy process for them to go through to, to get to this point in time. So we'll go to the next slide. I don't know who has, okay. So the next one is just, just the objectives of the study session. We're going to receive comments and questions from the council and public. That'll have to be the ones on the Zoom. And gather requests and then return for the updates for a final budget hearing in June. So that's our, that's our goal for tonight. But some of the themes that we have for this budget that we're working on, you know, we, we are into a new normal. We were, came through, we thought, with the pandemic, you know, it is creeping up a little bit. We're continuing to build on a strong fiscal foundation. I can tell you that we, you know, having been in other cities, we are the envy of many cities because of our financial stability. It's, it's incredible. I've told so many people of how strong financially we are. So that is really good. As well as balance, balancing multiple priorities, you know, we, we are a very busy city. I keep telling people that too. We have so many things going on. You know, as the city emerges from COVID nineteen pandemic, we're defining our future and the opportunities and challenges that the future presents. And we do so on solid footed, solid financial footing. In the past years, the city experienced a steady stream of one-time but also ongoing revenues since fiscal year twenty thirteen. Some of these increases include property tax rates going from five point six to seven, so that's a nice growth for the city. Increased sales tax through a sales tax localization agreement for Apple Park, that's also been fabulous. It was a great thing that we had that agreement done. Increased share of the city's, increasing the city's share from about fifty to sixty-five percent is part two of our sales tax sharing agreements. We increased the TOT occupancy rate from ten percent to twelve percent. We added four new hotels and established a collection agreement with Airbnb for short-term rentals, which we're one of the few cities that were able to do that, so that's really good. The sale of Prunridge Avenue and one-time construction tax related to Apple Park. The city's budget has grown at a tempered pace with the city making strategic investments while setting aside reserves. Some of these investments include the pavement maintenance, forty-nine point two million, and increasing our pavement index from sixty-three to eighty-five, and I think it's actually maybe a little bit higher. And that too, I told someone the other day that, and they said, no way. I've never, ever heard that high of a PCI anywhere in her, in her long career too.
Excuse me, the slides are not advancing as it's supposed to?
Oh.
I think the slide that we're currently on with the new normal, building a strong fiscal foundation.
It's right there.
Sorry, I could see it online.
Yeah, this is, these are my commentary. Paying off a large portion of the retiree health unfunded liability, resulting in Cupertino being one of only a handful of cities with minimal unfunded liability. Funding of critical reserves, including the economic uncertainty in the general fund and the capital reserve and the capital projects fund. Most cities don't have that. Creating a one, a one fifteen pension stabilization fund, which enables the city to weather unexpected CalPERS retirement rate increases, limiting the impact on the city's operating budget, and that was a very wise move for the city to do also. Investing in various capital projects totaling a hundred and thirteen million dollars since twenty fourteen, which includes significant investment in the city's bike and pedestrian master plan. So these prudent past decisions place the city in a favorable financial position with strong reserves, unassigned fund balances, which is great because you can put those to wherever you want. The city also will need to balance the need for additional capital investment above the annual two point five that's forecast, two point five million forecasted. Increased personnel costs for additional positions to meet the service needs and potential increase in salary benefits due to labor negotiations. So with that introduction, I'm going to pass it over to Christina.
Thank you, Jim. So we're going to try to get through this presentation as expeditiously as possible to leave some time for questions in the end.
That's great. Thank you very much, Director Alfaro. And I just want to note that there is a half hour allocation for it. Do you think that you can get done by the eleven thirty-five mark?
We practiced it and we got there, so I'm hopeful we can, I'll speak a little faster this go around.
All right, great. You're the micro machine, man.
Our annual budget.
If anyone remembers that. Anyway, sorry, thank you.
So our annual budget cycle, this is a little different take on the chart that we normally show. We wanted to be able to describe to council how our budget process works to get us to this proposed budget hearing that we're at. So we actually start planning for the next fiscal year's budget in December of the current fiscal year. And what we do is we take the adopted budget and we go ahead and pull out any one-time expenses that were approved by the city council. In addition, we update any salary and benefit costs based on the most known cost of living adjustments, health rate changes, and retirement rate changes. In addition, we go ahead and increase our material accounts by CPI. And for our contract, contract accounts, we do an increase there by CPI or based what's, on what's currently in the contract. And what that does is that creates a new baseline operating budget that's necessary for the next fiscal year. Departments review that baseline budget and then bring forward budget proposals for the next fiscal year. That can include one-time or ongoing charges. Those are brought before the city manager in April. The administrative services director, myself, review it for funding availability and the city manager ultimately has approval on what gets included in the proposed budget. As I said, any items approved by the city manager get presented to council for consideration as part of the proposed budget. And we have that study session in May. That's what we're currently in right now. City council has also broken out a couple of different aspects of the budget into different study sessions, including the city work program, capital improvement program, and community funding. And so what happens is we take information from those study sessions and we use them to help build the final budget that's presented to council in June. Just a quick little note here on how we can access the budget. There's several different ways aside from having printed documents available at City Hall and the library. You can also access the budget online. Along with, you can do an interactive version of our budget with our transparency portal and the list, the items are listed there, the links on how you can get there. We also wanted to mention again our award-winning resident tax calculator and budget forecast tool and provide a link for how you might want to be able to get to those tools in case you get through the budget document and you're just like, I need more budget. You can go and use those tools if you'd like. Moving on to our agenda, which is a pretty packed agenda, but we're going to try to get through it here relatively quickly. We're going to go over the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget overview. Then we'll take a more focused look at just the general fund, go over three different forecast scenarios for the general fund. Come back and finish up all the other funds except for the general fund and give you a quick update there. Then we'll go through the proposed budget request. We'll go over any outstanding issues and challenges and then cover next steps. So jumping right into our proposed budget overview, the recommended proposed budget totals a hundred, I'm waiting for the slide to advance. There we go. The recommended proposed budget totals a hundred and twenty-five point five million across all funds and is funded by a hundred and twenty-eight point eight million in revenue, resulting in an increase to fund balance across all funds of three point three million dollars. The proposed budget does not include funding for CIP, council work program, and community funding. Again, those items will be added back as part of the final budget for council's consideration. The largest fund is the general fund, which is recommended at ninety-three million dollars and funded by ninety-three point seven million in revenues. This results in an increase to fund balance of almost seven hundred thousand dollars. Enterprise funds show a use of fund balance, and this is actually planned based on drawing down existing fund balance for resource, for the resource recovery fund, which is associated with operating costs related to the collection, disposal, and recycling of solid waste performed under a franchise agreement. In addition, parks and recreation enterprise funds are also using fund balance due to an uptick in revenue versus having general funds subsidize some of these costs. Increases in the special revenue fund are mostly related to revenue for BMR housing. So next, if we take what is being requested, so I talked about the base budget level and that there's additional requests above that. Funding above this base level, whether it's one-time or ongoing, must be requested and approved. In total, we received nine point six million dollars in budget requests across all funds that are recommended for city council consideration. We will go over these requests later in the presentation. With that, I will actually hand it off to Acting Finance Manager, Thomas Leung, who will take you through the general fund and all fund summaries.
Okay, thank you, Director Alfaro. Welcome, Thomas.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Today, I'll be going through the general fund overview, general fund forecast, and the all fund summary. In the interest of time, I'll be focusing on the larger categories in this chart. General fund revenues are proposed at ninety-three point seven million. We can see the city's largest revenue sources are sales tax, property tax, and hotel or transient occupancy tax. Charges for services are also a large category, but the majority is due to the cost allocation plan, which allocates indirect and overhead costs between funds. In other words, charges for services are mostly transfers between funds with no fiscal impact. On this slide, we can see a comparison between this year's proposed budget and last year's adopted budget. Sales tax is increasing by four point one million or fifteen percent. Currently, the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, also known as the CDTFA, is auditing one of the city's taxpayers. The CDTFA is a state agency that collects and distributes sales tax throughout the state. Due to the potential impact of this audit, it lowered its sales tax estimate to thirty-one point nine million, which is lower than the forty-two point six million received in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Property tax is increasing by two point two million or eight percent. Although property values continue to increase, staff will be monitoring the potential impact of remote work on property values in the city and region. Transient occupancy tax or hotel tax is increasing by two million or sixty-seven percent. Transient occupancy tax decreased significantly during a pandemic due to travel restrictions and is expected to gradually rebound over the next several years. I'll also draw your attention to intergovernmental revenue. Intergovernmental revenue is decreasing by four point seven million as last year's budget included grant funding due to the American Rescue Plan Act. In total, general fund revenue is proposed at ninety-three point seven million, an increase of four million or four percent from last year's adopted budget. General fund expenditures are proposed at ninety-three million. As we can see, the city's largest expenditure categories are employee compensation and benefits, contract services, and transfers to other funds. Compensation and benefits are the largest expense and are increasing by three point two million, primarily due to requests for additional staff, which will be discussed later in this presentation. Materials are increasing by approximately six hundred thousand due to CPI increases and increased utility rates. Contract services are increasing by one point two million, primarily due to a one point one million dollar increase in the city's law enforcement contract with the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office. Special projects are decreasing as the city work program is not included. In total, general fund expenditures are ninety-three million, an increase of three point two million or four percent from last year's adopted budget. Now, I'll be going through the general fund forecast. I'll start with the baseline assumptions and then discuss three different scenarios. First, these forecasts include all the proposed budget requests. As Christina mentioned, the budget is proposing nine point six million in requests. Second, the forecasts do not assume any new development projects that are not approved or permitted. Thirdly, the forecasts are assuming that the city's facility debt will be paid off in fiscal year twenty thirty, saving two point seven million annually. As mentioned earlier, the city also has two section one fifteen pension trusts, oh, two section one fifteen trusts, including a pension trust as well as an OPEP trust for retiree health costs. The forecast assumes that the OPEP trust will find, will find our other post-employment benefits, also known as HOPEP or retiree health costs. And in this forecast, staff recommends using the section one fifteen trust to find OPEP costs since this plan is over one hundred percent funded. And finally, the forecast assumes recessions every four years for all revenues. Historically, business cycles are between four to five years on average. And while the timing of recessions is uncertain, the recessionary assumptions allow the city to forecast revenues more conservative. Based on the city's prior experience with recessions, revenues are projected to be flat during these times. And why do we do this? There is substantial uncertainty in forecasts, but if revenues are overestimated, the city may need to make disruptive cuts. As a result, a conservative reduces the risk of actual shortfalls. Now, I'll go through the revenue assumptions. I'll focus on sales, property, and transient occupancy tax, which are the most, which have the most uncertainty. The city's largest revenue source is sales tax and is projected to increase by one point eight percent annually on average. The city uses a conservative forecast due to the concentration risk of the city's sales tax sources. The second, the second largest revenue source is property tax, and it is projected to increase moderately with an average growth rate of two point five percent. And again, the forecast does not assume any new development projects. Transient occupancy or hotel tax dropped significantly in fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two due to pandemic-based restrictions. The city's TOT revenues are primarily due to business travel, which is recovering more slowly than leisure travel. And TOT is expected to gradually recover to seventy-five percent of historical highs in fiscal year twenty twenty-four and then increase moderately afterwards. Now, I'll move on to the expenditure assumptions. Full-time salaries are projected to increase at two point seven five percent annually, and our forecast includes an assumption of five FTE and vacancy savings due to attrition in line of historical experiences. Due to labor negotiations currently underway, potential cost of living adjustments or COLAs are not included in this forecast. Materials are projected to increase by the Consumer Price Index or CPI, an average of two point five percent over the forecast period. Contract services are projected to increase by CPI annually except for the law enforcement contract. For the terms of this contract of the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office, it is projected to increase at CPI plus two percent. Special projects are projected to increase by CPI from a base of two million. And finally, the city budget transfers between funds to ensure that all funds have sufficient fund balance. Transfers are projected to increase by CPI, and we are projecting two point seven million annually to the debt service fund until the debt is paid off in fiscal year twenty thirty. We also project three million annually, annually to the transportation fund and two point five million annually to the and 2.5 million annually to the capital reserve. In the past, transfers to the capital reserve were not included in proposed or adopted budgets. Instead, funds were transferred at mid-year. But the city is now budgeting these transfers to facilitate CIP budget forecasting. We also project 2 million to the IT funds and 1 million to enterprise funds. Now, I'll go into the specific scenarios. In fiscal year 2021, the city's sales tax revenues reached record highs due to increased online sales and a corresponding increase in the city's share of the county pools. But due to the CDTFA audit discussed earlier, the city is forecasting sales taxes to be lower than our original projections. Forecast A projects a smaller loss, forecast B a moderate or medium loss, and forecast C a larger loss. As the results of the audit are still unknown, and it's also confidential, this slide does not quantify the projected losses. The forecast also differed in transfers to the capital reserve with forecast A at 3 million annually, forecast B 2.5 million, and forecast C 1.5 million. Forecast B is the one that is presented in our proposed budget document, and it is also the forecast that staff is recommending. Comparing these three different scenarios, we can see that forecast A ends with ending unassigned fund balance of 71.5 million in fiscal year 2032. The forecast B, 49.9 million, and forecast C, 28 million. And these fund balances will be updated in the final budget to include any third quarter adjustments that are approved by city council. In forecast A, we can see that the surplus increases in fiscal year 2024 as TOT starts to recover and as well due to increases in sales tax. Decreases in fiscal year 2025 and 2029 are due to the recessionary assumptions. And we can also see the impact of the facility debt being fully paid off in fiscal year 2030, leading to an increase in the surplus in 2031. Ending unassigned fund balance is 71.5 million for this forecast. Forecast B is presented in our proposed budget document in greater detail. Again, we see the impact of the recessionary assumptions and the impact of the debt service. Ending unassigned fund balance is 49.9 million for this forecast. And then forecast C, we see deficits due to that larger sales tax loss. Ending unassigned fund balance is 28 million in this forecast. I'll also note that in all three forecasts, the city does not use its economic uncertainty reserve, approximately 25 million, and also the Section 115 pension trust. So, both of those reserves are still untouched. Now, I'll move on to the all fund summary. So, I'll be discussing all funds except for the general fund. So, for all funds except the general fund, total revenues are proposed at 35.1 million and total expenditures at 32.5 million. Fund balance is increasing by 2.6 million due to an increase in BMR housing revenue. On this slide, we're comparing this year's proposed budget to last year's adopted budget for all the funds except the general fund. First, compensation and benefits are increasing due to additional staffing requests. Materials are increasing due to additional software enhancements that are proposed. Contract services, capital outlays, and transfers are decreasing as the CIP program is not included. Finally, special projects are decreasing as city work program projects are also not included. The CIP and city work program projects will be updated in the final budget. In total, expenses are decreasing by 26.6 million. But in the final budget, expenses are expected to be higher once the, once the CIP and work program is included. Now, I'll hand it back to Christina to go through the expense requests by department.
Okay, a quick time check with about 10 minutes left on the allocation here. So, I know you're on slide 24 out of.
Yeah, we, we'll move through the rest of these slides pretty, pretty quickly.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, so we look at the proposed budget, and we're going to show you requests by departments, and we're going to walk you through those requests as well. Again, the proposed budget requests $9.6 million in additional funding above base level. And in this chart, you can, oh, there we go. In this chart, you can see the projects are broken out not only by department, but whether they're one-time special projects, ongoing special projects, other ongoing, or if the costs are related to new staffing. So, with that, we'll go right into councils and commissions. And the council and commission's department budget is decreasing by 7% under last year's adopted budget or $97,000. The decrease is due to community funding and historical society funding not currently being included. If we go to the next slide, we just wanted to do a quick call out to the community funding study session, which we'll be having on Thursday. The Parks and Recreation Commission carried a unanimous motion to recommend to city council $96,460.46 in funding. Just as a note here, whenever this, if council chooses to move these recommendations from the Parks and Rec Commission forward and adopt it as part of the budget, we will need to round up as our system does not allow for decimals in our budget module. So, just. Next, moving on to our administration department, which consists of the city manager, city attorney, city clerk's office, and includes sustainability, communications, emergency management, and economic development divisions. And their, this department is increasing by 5% over last year's adopted budget or $379,000. The department is requesting two new full-time positions, a limited-term communications analyst, and an administrative assistant. All new position requests will be discussed in a little more detail in an upcoming slide. Moving to the administration, special projects. The administration department is requesting $220,000 in ongoing and one-time special projects as listed in the table. And we're not going to go into a lot of detail for these, but we want to leave time for questions. Should there be specific questions on some of these special project items? Moving on to our law enforcement department. This consists primarily of our city law enforcement contract with Santa Clara County Sheriff's Department, and this is increasing by 7% over last year's adopted budget or approximately $1 million. The increase is due to the negotiated increase in the contract with the sheriff's office, which Thomas mentioned earlier. Our innovation and technology department budget is increasing by 26% over last year's adopted budget or $1.7 million. The increase is primarily due to the transfer of one and a half positions from the city manager's office as part of a reorganization of the video division between IT and city manager. In addition, the department is requesting additional funds for infrastructure and application enhancements. Overall, the IT department is requesting $858,528 in one-time projects as listed on the slide. Full list of projects being requested can be found on pages 36 through 37 of the proposed budget document. Next, moving on to our administrative services department. The administrative services department budget is increasing by 28% over last year's adopted budget or 2.2 million. The increase is primarily due to the request for two additional full-time positions and significant increases in general liability and property insurance. The administrative services department is also requesting $265,000 in one-time special projects. Parks and Recreation Department budget is decreasing by 4% under last year's adopted budget or $607,000. The decrease is primarily due to a reduction in cost allocation cost and is offset by a requisition, a request for a new community outreach specialist position. Parks and Recreation is not requesting any additional special projects. But the next slide, as we've presented in previous years, shows the different festivals that have fees waived by the city and city-paid expenses and total festival cost. Next, our community development department budget is decreasing by 12% or $1.8 million due to a decrease in one-time special projects. The decrease is offset by a request for five new positions. This department did not have any additional budget requests. Our public works department budget is decreasing by 1% over last year's adopted budget or $204,000. The decrease is primarily due to a decrease in cost allocation charges and is offset by a request for two new positions. The public works department is requesting almost $6 million in one-time and ongoing special projects. Again, please refer to pages 36 through 37 of the proposed budget document for a full list of special projects. Okay, this is the last department. The non-departmental department budgets are decreasing by 43% under last year's adopted budget or 10.8 million. This department consists of transfers out for the general, tree, and capital reserve funds. In addition, this department also includes the city's debt service payment, and the decrease is primarily due to CIP transfer out costs, which are not currently being included. The city's proposed budget doc, oop, make sure we get to, yep, we're on the right slide, sorry. The city's proposed budget document is printed on May, by May 1st every year to allow the public and council at least two weeks to review the document before this study session. To meet the printing deadline, changes after a certain date or after the print date do not make it in the document and are presented to council as part of this study session or the final budget hearing and adoption. Some of those changes include removing the Fuse Fellow special project and replacing it with a two-year limited-term analyst position due to changes in available outside funding. In addition, as mentioned previously, the budget, the final budget may add for council's consideration funding for the work program, CIP, and community funding. In addition, we will update fund balance projections to take into account additional sales tax revenue recommended as part of the third quarter financial report. Next, we just want to include just the, I know we just talked about CIP, so I won't belabor this, but this just as a, as a data point for council to, to remind council of what's currently, what we currently discussed at the study session. So, this slide will be obviously updated before final budget comes before you. Next, moving on to issues and challenges. Thomas already mentioned the CDTFA audit. And for our most recent communication with the CDTFA indicate they have narrowed the scope of their audit and are awaiting documentation from the taxpayer that they should receive in 30 days, so around mid-June. The results of this audit could have significant impacts to the city's budget. As more information becomes available, staff will update council on the impacts, if any, when they are known. As things open up again and the world gets back to normal, we will continue to monitor property and transient occupancy or hotel tax for impacts and/or recovery trends. The city continues to have a large concentration of taxes with one single taxpayer that makes it susceptible to the volatility of this taxpayer. As such, the city maintains healthy reserves to counteract any negative impacts along with giving the city time to develop a strategy to deal with any negative impacts in the longer term. Finally, capital project funding above the 2.5 million annually included in the proposed budget will need to be weighed against other funding requests, including personnel costs from new positions and increased negotiated labor costs along with costs related to the CALPERS, to CALPERS, the city's retirement system. We're going to move through this next three or four slides relatively quickly. Just wanted to summarize, overall, staff is requesting a total of 13 new positions. This includes two limited-term positions in the administration department. The management analyst position listed here is not currently in the proposed budget. This was a swap for the Fuse Fellow we discussed earlier. And salary and benefit costs related to these 13 positions are $2.4 million. And so, there's a, these slides will show you the position, the costs related to them, and a brief explanation of what the position will be doing. And with that, we'll skip over to slide number 53. So, in conclusion, we will wrap up the current fiscal year reporting on May 19th with the third quarter financial report. We will continue fiscal year '22, '23 budget discussion, tentatively scheduled for June 7th with the consideration of the operating and capital budget adoption. Lastly, we'll report on how we ended the current fiscal year and give an update as to where we stand as of the first three months of the new fiscal year with the first quarter report slated to go before council in November of 2022. That concludes our presentation, and department directors and their teams are available to answer any questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Director Alfaro. Let's go to our members of the public, and we'll remind everyone that if you have your hand raised, by the time that the first speaker is concluded speaking, then you'll be called on, on Zoom. Then we'll go to blue cards. There are still no members of the public present in the chambers. Also, during the time that the first person is speaking, if you email your comments to cityclerk@coopertino.org, then up to three minutes of your email will be read into the record by the city clerk. So, right now, I see one member of the public with a hand raised. That is Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, council members. I've got a couple of questions. On the budget, once again, going back to the $500,000 splash pad that has been proposed to replace an aging pool slide. The pool slide was installed in 2012. The first, as far as I can tell, the first time I saw the proposal for splash pad was actually in 2015. So, in 2015, there was no talk about ocean inspections or extra staffing, et cetera. And at that time, in 2015, the cost for that new splash pad was going to be $690,000, not $500,000. And that continued through this cycle, 2015, 16, 17, 18. It was 690K. So, I don't understand how it can get less expensive and why now it's about replacing an aging slide, et cetera. Okay, so the other question I have is about enterprise funds. So, enterprise funds are there to kind of give you a profit and loss picture for things that the city does to collect money. So, I recall way back when, I think that the senior center might have been in an enterprise fund. I don't see it there anymore. Be kind of good to see, like, who are we serving? People within the city, outside of the city? At one time, Blackberry Farm Pool Picnic Business wasn't an enterprise fund. It appears to no longer be an enterprise fund. The golf isn't an enterprise fund. And so, in order to use a facility, you have to pay a fee. So, you can kind of tell whether they're making money or losing money or, or, you know, breaking even. Obviously, you know, parks, plain old parks, they cost money for the city to, to use, and there's no entrance fee. But there's not an enterprise fund for the pool picnic business. You pay a fee to use, to use the facilities. And it would be good to understand where we're at with that and also as far as resident, non-resident use and how many people are served. I thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you, Rhoda. Our next and final speaker on, on Zoom is Jean Bedord. And before we go to Jean, Madam City Clerk, are there any emails from comments in the public? Okay, so that will be it for our public comments. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. It's been a long night. My name is Jean Bedord, and I am a longtime Cupertino resident. This budget document has over 500 pages, and it is a wealth of information regarding the fiscal health of the city, which fortunately is very solid. I commend our city manager and the staff for making this relatively readable. It takes a lot of hard work to put a budget document together. I think it's important to recognize that this year has been particularly difficult due to the loss of the city finance manager. I am particularly concerned about staffing. According to the report, there were 43 separations in fiscal year '21 versus 20 separations in fiscal year 20, 2020. A doubling of turnover. Yes, there are contributing factors. However, in my experience, this level of increase is also an indicator of a toxic work environment. Via the grapevine, I've heard that more staff are actively seeking positions in more friendly environments. Yes, the budget does call for adding 13 additional positions, including a purchasing manager, as recommended by Moss Adams in the internal audit report, as well as three planners. I support these additions. But it takes time to recruit new employees and time for them to get up to speed on specifics in the city. I've just listened to the city work plan and CIP. They're unrealistic, given the current staffing levels. Your job is to legislate policy, but I'm hearing much too much micromanagement. Please be considerate to staff. They are under a lot of stress and stretched much too thin. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. We'll take it back to council at this point. And so, would anyone like to start us off? We have 15 minutes left in this meeting. And so, I will give everyone assurances that we will go ahead and continue this to May 19th. And I'll go ahead and ask for an allocation of, an hour for this study session to conclude on May 19th. But right now, we have about 15 minutes left. Let me go ahead and try to divvy this out fairly and proportionally. So, we'll take a few minutes from council. So we'll take a few minutes from council on an initial round. If there's additional time, we'll go ahead and revisit people that still have comments. So Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised first.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So looking at page 37 of the budget, and I want to thank staff for providing, and Thomas in particular, for providing answers to a multitude of questions. Looking on page 37 of the budget, I just want to bring up that we've got number eight, well, it's unit number 844 Traffic Engineering, the Lawson Middle School Bike Way, is being written up as a special project, which we haven't yet decided on that. And Traffic Engineering, there's a planned transportation project, $80,000. It doesn't say what that item is, so I'd like to hear a little bit more about that, and you can come back at the next meeting and provide that information. That would be great. There was an update today from Thomas, fiscal year 2021 to '22 special projects update, and in it was Valco Town Center, ongoing the RISE development for $2,147,200. And it was- the information that we got when I asked a question about it was that it was approved back in, oh, gosh, it was, I believe, 2019. And when I go back to 2019, there are some more Valco expenses and revenue, which I think we need to see a complete tally here because we're showing- we're showing 14.7 million coming in for construction plan check. No, I'm sorry, I've got that backwards. 14.7 in expenses for Valco construction plan check and revenue of 22.5 million, building inspections of expense of 5.4 million, but the revenue is 7.2 million. And the- let's see, and this item here, which we're showing just a portion of, is 2 million, 2 million and then 146 dollars, but the revenue is 2.3 million. So all of these are actually net positive for us, and so I'm- we were only shown this one item, which is a little misleading, of the $2 million for the RISE development, and no further details around it. So I'd like to see this as more complete about what's going on for the ongoing Valco expenses. And to that question, I am not sure how these special projects are being accounted for in the long term because it- these- you have ongoing projects, but unlike some of the other ones, I'm not necessarily seeing, you know, what happened to a project that was from 2019. It's not showing up in our book, and then it's just- it showed up in the special projects update. So that's a little bit confusing. Now, you're showing some fund balances also in the budget, and when the Audit Committee received the March 2022 report on the fund balances, we end up with different totals. For instance, the park dedication in the budget is showing a special revenue fund balance of 2.2 million, but when I look at the March 2022 report, it's 22.2 million, and that's a significant difference. It's huge.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, that's your time, so.
Okay, so I'll- there's several discrepancies between March 2022 and what's showing in the fund balance report, and I'd like to have an explanation about that, and we can- when we come back on the 19th, maybe we can have that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Chow?
I'll yield her my time, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, let me visit the other council members at this point before going back to your three minutes. Actually, since we're going in order here, Councilmember Moore, Vice Mayor Chow has yielded her three minutes due, so we'll have you continue this time.
Okay. Well, one thing that I found missing in our budget has been certain policies, and I'd like to direct fellow council members' attention and staff to the city of Chico, their budget policies fiscal year 2020, 2021. In particular, they've got policies on page BP-9 and BP-10, changes between personnel and non-personnel expenditures, changes between departments, changes between expenditure categories, and fiscal year-end adjustments, to name a few, and.
What page of this document are you on?
BP-9 and 10 in particular, and I think that we, as a council, we've been a little bit light on providing guidance and policy within our budget, and I think that's- it's been problematic. So I would like to have some comments on those two pages from staff when we come back in- oh, that's fast, when we come back on the 19th.
Okay, I'm just sharing my screen and showing BP-9 and then BP-10 of the document that you were referencing.
Right, and then in particular, this changes in between departments, right where you're at, if you could scroll down just a tiny bit. Yeah, so expenditures will be appropriated at department level. Appropriation transfers between departments requires approval of the Administrative Services Director/Manager and/or City Council based on the following amounts under- and then they qualify for each one, when it has to come to council. Okay, so we've had- we have some pretty significant true-ups throughout the year, and I think that this could change that a little bit. So I'd like to hear some comments on those types of changes. Lastly, I mean, I can go back to the fund balance discrepancies, if you like, but there were discrepancies with regards to the BMR Housing Transportation Fund, and I'd like to understand the Capital Improvement Fund that we have listed here, because I don't believe that when we were looking at the CIP budget, that this Capital Improvement Fund was being discussed, is having yet another potential source of funding for the items that were on the list. And I'll leave it with that. There's- I have more, but I need to kind of.
Okay, well, that's good. Your consolidated time has arrived.
Thank you.
So would anyone like to go next on a few minutes prior to continuing? Councilmember Willie?
Yeah. Thank you for rushing through, Christina. That's pretty amazing. My question fairly simple. Your slide number 28. I'm not quite sure if I heard it right. You said the decrease was due to the Historical Society?
That's all of community funding, including Historical Society.
You lost me again.
All of the community funding, so any of the requests that go through Parks and Rec Commission here for the nonprofits requesting those dollars. So that community funding budget includes that nonprofit funding that goes through Parks and Rec, along with expenditures or budget for Historical Society.
Still a little bit confused about the wording of the Historical Society. I mean, they come to us for their yearly request.
Correct, and that's currently not included in the budget, as I understand there was a subcommittee on this item, and it's supposed to be coming back, I believe, on June 7th.
Okay, well, there you go. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. And Councilmember Wei, did you have any comments or remarks, follow-up questions at this time? Okay. I'll go ahead and cede my time. At this point, we have about five minutes left, and Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised. Okay, you're heading over to the overhead projector. You know, while you do that, actually, let me just say very briefly, you know, when I look at these council and commissions expenditures as an initial matter, what makes me wonder, you know, when we break down these costs and expenses, is how we break it up in accordance to cost allocation. So when you look at council and commission expenditures, that's really not a reflection of compensation and benefits. Similarly, the administration expenditures or any other departmental expenditures, that doesn't fold in those salary and benefit costs. Although, when you look at council allocations, that does seem to have some personnel cost allocated to that. So I would request that in the future, you know, we do have a big chunk allocated towards compensation and, you know, a smaller but also big chunk towards benefits. I think it would be a good idea to reflect how much is going into each of these departments, just purely by compensation and benefits, so that we can get kind of, prior to these various cost allocations, that kind of comparison. So I think that's a more fair metric to lead by when you're talking about these various breakdowns. But I see, Councilmember Moore, you're at the overhead projector, and you have the community funding policy in front of you here. Did you want to speak to that?
Yes, so one comment about the policies that we have in our budget book. I would like to see what the source of the policy is, if it was done by resolution, and then some- something about the revision date, or, you know, the year it was approved, who approved it, that type of thing. For community funding, I just want to point out that the community funding grants shall not exceed 20, I believe it's $20,000 per applicant per year, and to receive consideration, the grant requests must be made or sponsored by a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and be awarded only once per project. And on the backside, the grant recipients shall submit a written report to the Parks and Rec Department to show proof that the grant funds have been spent in the manner and for the purposes stated on the application. And then they have a timeframe for it, but I want to make sure that when we- because this item is coming to us, we already have community funding policy and evaluation criteria and a cost amount total, and there is a range, which I'm sure, you know, we can go past it, but there is a range suggested in total funding available. So it's- to me, when I read this policy, I look at 90,000 as a hard stop, but it's- we can- we'll be looking at this, I believe, on the 19th, and so we have these policies, and we need to make sure that the grant requests are actually meeting this policy that we already have. So I was unaware that this existed when we started our subcommittee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. And at this point, I'll make a follow-up comment as well. So just to clarify this, to get more of an idea of how the various employment dollars are divvied up, if you could bring that back to us, probably not in two days, right? But maybe that's, you know, not that hard to do. If you could break it down by the same departments, you can start with the council and commissions, and then go through the various departments, Administrative Services, you know, City Manager's Office, the IT Department, Public Works, Parks and Rec. I think that would be a good breakdown to see where those allocations are going. Now, with regard to, I think, some of the misrepresentations made by members of our public in the past, you know, here you have an allegation of a toxic environment based upon some kind of aspersion cast and stated that, well, the employee turnover is an indicator of that. I think it would behoove us to get a sense of where we sit in the market with regard to that employee turnover, because turnover is quite prevalent everywhere we go right now. And if you were just to look at the various types of interactions coming out from other jurisdictions, they're not as economically stable, and the quality of the articles and that type of press, from an objective perspective, is really quite different than what's, you know, actually going on in Cupertino. You know, I don't say this lightly, when we make these kinds of aspersions that border on the edge of slander in public, then we really need to be held accountable to these types of, you know, statements. And on a similar vein, previously, when we talk about the unfilled FTEs that are available, we have this every year. There's turnover every year, but that is not a reflection of whether we are going ahead and, so to speak, driving people away. So you have data that indicates, historically speaking, you know, we have spots to fill up. Now, what we've done is we've made a concerted effort in the past several years to go ahead and say, economize. If you have an availability there, you don't necessarily fill it up right away. And so we've made those historically very fiscally responsible decisions, which is part of the reason why we're in such good fiscal health right now. So, and I analogize this to something, I'll just share this. You know, there's a particular, you know, community member that likes to, you know, basically email, I guess, the city manager and myself and maybe a couple of other council members every now and then, and just basically cast just complete aspersions that are completely unfounded. And I'll tell you the most recent one, because he does read, you know, this kind of missive that, you know, this member of the community who's accusing us of, you know, creating a toxic environment has just, you know, kind of hurled past the fence. And he says, you know, 150 cities in America, these are how they rank in terms of the best places to live. And he says today, you know, Cupertino's not on this list because of the corruption of the city manager and the city council. And, you know, actually, if you do your homework, like our members of our council do, what you'll realize is that this list is comprised of the 150 largest cities in the United States, and the fact that we're not on this list simply tells you that Cupertino is not one of the 150 largest cities in the U.S. It doesn't mean that we're not within the 150, you know, best places to live. So I would say, be responsible, you know, when you're making these types of assertions. Don't make insinuations based upon things that you haven't established as fact, and I think maybe the quality of the discussion in the public realm will then reflect the responsibility with which our elected officials have been stewarding in their responsibilities. So, you know, thank you very much for entertaining that set of comments, my fellow colleagues and our staff. We are at midnight. I will ask as a final question, are people willing to start at 5:30 on Thursday, two days from now? As we haven't gotten through the initial budget study session, Jim, I realize you'll be on the East Coast, that's 8:30, and initially, I was going to ask, can we start at 6:00 as opposed to 6:30? But given this somewhat extra time allocation here with the budget, I'm getting a thumbs up from Councilmember Moore. Is there a 5:30 availability? I would say anyone has veto power. We can go ahead and start at 6:00 if it's inconvenient for anyone, or 6:30 for that matter. Is that going to be workable? I don't see objections at this point, and the reason I'm asking is that we'll have to notice the meeting tomorrow with our city clerk's office. Okay, then we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Vice Mayor Chow?
I'd like to make a request that when we come back, like, for example, the things that's not finalized, like the community grant.
Yes.
When we make the comparison, just break out last year's but in two community grant and the rest, and for example, CIP, the city budget, CIP and non-CIP, then we have a fair comparison. So you don't have to explain the reduction is because we did not include those.
Okay, is that clear enough, Administrative Services Director Alfaro?
I think that's something we could do, but also understand that those numbers will be different because you're adopting different CIPs and different work program items with different- but so you could do it for the comparison, but the reality is, at the end of the day, those are still going to be differences because those numbers are going to be different this year than they were last year, but it should bring you closer.
Yeah.
Closer to a fair comparison.
Okay, thank you. And another comment about, if you look, there is a great resignation. There is a great resignation. This term is used everywhere, because not only in public agencies, in private companies, people are resigning for flexible hours, for a better life-work balance.
Okay, Vice Mayor, thanks very much. So we're at the point where we're adjourning to 5:30. Councilmember Moore, you had your hand raised. Did you have some procedure or comment?
We don't need to, yes, we don't need to continue or.
We're going to go ahead and continue this item to our special meeting on Thursday, May 19th.
Voting is the question.
And so I'll just refer to our city attorney. Do I have the unilateral power to do that, or do I need to call for a motion to do so?
I would recommend a motion.
Recommend a motion? Okay, so may I call for a motion to continue this item 41 to our special meeting on May 19th, 2022? Councilmember Wei, you have your hand raised. So moved, and Councilmember Moore, would you like to second?
Second.
Your recommended. Your recommended motion? Okay, thank you very much. And Councilmember Wei, you have a comment? Yes. Put on your microphone, Councilmember Wei.
I would recommend we ask questions ahead of time so we can save some time and have answers and ask more questions.
Okay, my colleagues, if you could send any questions to perhaps Jim, as well as Christina, let's say by the close of business tomorrow, 5:00 PM on Wednesday, or rather later today, technically, that would behoove the process of our continuation. So continuing
The answers will be shared with the public?
I think that's for the benefit of staff to be ready, to anticipate those questions. So we're continuing to 5:30 PM.
For the staff to be ready, that means we won't get the answers.
We won't get the answers. There isn't time to disseminate those. 5:30 PM on Thursday, May 19, that would be the motion on the table, continuing this current item 41, as well as the rest of our special meeting. Please vote with your lights.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. All right, well, good night, everyone. And we will see you on Thursday evening at 5:30 PM for the continuation of this item, as well as our special meeting. That will be noticed on Wednesday, May 18. Have a great night. Meeting adjourned.